Welcome to Zoom. Enter your participant ID followed by town. Other. You are in the meeting now. You are the first participant. Please stand by. This meeting is being recorded.
Just to orient yourselves or ourselves to the lake, we're looking kind of to the north and to the west here. The dam is up in this corner. Kip Carson Road goes back along this rim. And just a little background on the project, the Eldorado Hydroelectric Project is comprised of four upper elevation reservoirs. Lake Aloha and Echo Lake are on the Highway 50 corridor, except for Aloha is actually up in Desolation Wilderness. So it's about a seven mile hike to get back to that into the wilderness area. And then on the Highway 88 corridor, we have Caples Lake and Silver Lake. Capacity wise, Silver is about 8,900 acre feet. Caples 22,000. Echo Lake about 2,000. And Lake Aloha 5,000 acre feet. And then, so these lakes are oriented around 70,000 feet elevation. And then our diversion dam is down here at 4,000 feet elevation. So the South Fork here and the Silver Fork and the American River join at the confluence. And just downstream of that is our diversion dam. And then our 22 mile long Eldorado Canal. That conveys the water to Eldorado Foray Bay. And from here, we can convey water for into our water supply system to the Reservoir One Water Treatment Plant. It will bring water to the powerhouse where it returns to the South Fork American River. This is what the dam looks like today on the downstream side. But imagine you'll see in a future slide here that what's inside is this timber crib constructed in 1876, filled with rock and gravel and sand. And over time, extra layers have been added. First, rock masonry was stacked. It was wet masonry mortared on the upstream face, dry masonry on the downstream side. And then this bin wall was constructed in 1986 and filled. And that was because the downstream face was bulging. At that time, the highway used to pass over the dam crest, whereas now it passes over the bridge here. Some other related facilities here are the outlet pipe, the low level outlet, an abandoned fish ladder that's been out of commission for decades. The spillway which sits back here on this kind of dam left oriented looking downstream when we talk about right and left on a dam. And then looking upstream, this is the spillway structure. So you can see that when we have to open these gates, we also lose some of the holding capacity of the reservoir. And it's over half that we lose at that point in time. So, and this is a view of just the operator. We have a motorized operator that allows us some remote control and early response during a storm. But in essence, the big picture operations is we hold the lake as high as possible until after September 15th. And the spillway has to be opened according to Division of Safety of Dams requirements from November 1st through April 1st. So we can't begin to impound water above that spill crest for the base of the gates until after April 1st. So some of the issues regarding the spillway with the current structure is that we can't pass a probable maximum flood, which is kind of the worst case event. But it's where it's a basis for under federal energy regulatory commission standards that a dam needs to be able to comply with. And we can't do that without overtopping the dam. So the spillway has to be enlarged one way or another. We need more spill capacity. Also, there's a question as to how well the spillway would hold up under a seismic event. And then looking on the upstream side, you can see the, this is the tower for the low level outlet water passing through the dam. But the existing capacity, as I mentioned, is about 8,900 acre feet. The existing depth of storage when full, 22.7 feet. The current dimensions are 280 feet long by about 32 feet high. Outlet capacity 75 cubic feet per second. And as I mentioned, the reservoir capacity when we're, when the spillway is open is even with the sill here. So it's, you can see there's quite a bit of drawdown or effect on the storage. So one of the issues, another issue we have besides the spillway is the upstream face. So over time, with these layers that were added, another layer added on the upstream side was this gunite lining. And that has really diminished in its integrity over time. You can see the number of Band-Aids and sealant applied to that over time. And one of the issues we have is sometimes we don't recognize we have an issue with the dam face until we start filling the lake in the spring as the snow is melting. And then we have to draw it down to work on it. And as we do that, it means that we may not depend on where we're at in that cycle of snowmelt and inflow. It may mean that we can't refill the lake all the way because we lost part of that snowmelt cycle. So that puts a couple of things in jeopardy. Water supply and the ability to assure that we fill the lake and potential effects on recreation. So going back in time, this, as I mentioned, is an 1876 structure. This is a snapshot from 1917. But it's, the timbers are kind of like a Lincoln log set if you had those as a kid like I did. But voids have developed. Those timbers have rotted over time, even though they're internal. But if you think about it, they've existed for almost 150 years. And it's pretty amazing they've held up as long as they have. One of the signs that we were experiencing kind of degradation of the internal workings of the dam was when the highway was passing over, Caltrans was adding AC to that surface on the order of three inches or so every year or two because it was compacting. It was consolidating and they were having to keep the highway ungrade. And so that was an early sign. But another sign was in 2015 when we discovered a void. This is a pismeter pipe or kind of like a well indicator of what the statutory water level is inside the dam. This little white PVC pipe here. But once we investigated, it was loose. And we said, well, that's not right. It's supposed to be solved within the fill of the dam. And once we investigated, probed around, we ended up having a void that was eight feet long by four feet wide by three foot deep. This is on the back fill, so it's, that's being filled here. But that was a sign that, you know, this is more advanced than we understood before. And something that is an issue in terms of the long-term reliability of the dam. And we had did more tests to look at what are the internal workings look with seismic refraction and some other kind of geotech methods. And we found that basically the dam's intact. There are some areas that are less dense, but there aren't voids like this elsewhere at this, at that point in time. But still a concern going forward. So looking as an overview, we work with both Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, and State Division of Safety of Dams. And they required that we address the decomposing 1876 era timber crib voids because that's affecting the integrity of the structure, that we address seepage control. We can't allow particles to migrate out of the fill of the dam, which there are finer particles and higher seepage rates can cause that loss and creation, loss of material and creation of voids. The spillway capacity issue, which I mentioned, and the seismic spillway stability. So we looked at two options, one to repair and place and one to replace. The repair option would have been part way, partly to set up a drill rig on the dam, pour down, and then grout a very dense grid of boreings in backfill with grout to help fill those voids. And then add an impermeable liner to the upstream face and to also modify the spillway, enlarge it. And when we looked at that, we said, oh, well, what's the cost? And then we compared that to replacing the dam. And the cost at that point in time, just about four years ago, was they're about the same. But the downside of the repair option is that you're, we would continue to experience the decomposition of those timbers all the more over time. And so that issue never really goes away. And some issues with how well the spillway capacity would be improved is another factor. So we felt it was in our best long-term interest to replace the dam. We coordinated with FERC and DSD. They agreed with that. And in the meantime, the dam is carefully inspected. We had a person on site just yesterday and we'll be out there with state inspectors on Wednesday this week. And we have an independent consultant that looks at it once every five years. And I look at it myself on certain frequencies. So the dam is determined to be safe for continued operation at this point in time with our careful monitoring program that we have in place. So looking ahead at our proposed construction access and staging, this is property that the district owns in the vicinity of Silver Lake, but the old Cays Resort area, the dam vicinity itself near the left bank. And then on the right side here, near the entrance to Kip Carson Road we're talking about. And then there will be some activity within the reservoir bed itself. So we're looking at having to set up coffer dams to basically de-water the dam site so we can work in the dry. So that'll be a part of the, of the spread of the project as well. Just to give you an idea what the ground conditions are like, this is looking downstream. So left is, to the left of the image. But as you see, as we go to the right, we get deeper in terms of the granite, the solid bedrock. And as deep as 40 feet in some areas that we're going to have to contact and clean and establish the foundation for the new dam.
Is it like heading toward the north? That profile, is that like north-south or?
Yeah, it's.
Like toward the Silver Fork itself?
So to the left would be generally, well, downstream would be generally north in that, in that image. So looking straight, so to the right would be, tend to be to the northeast. And please ask questions as we go. You don't need to wait until the end. So the, we're currently at 30% design. This is still a pretty initial stage where the results of our plans are still preliminary. But this is what the new structure may look like, something like this. Looking downstream in this upper image over here, well, this is the downstream side looking upstream. Sorry for the. voids and then add an impermeable liner to the upstream face and to also modify the spillway and enlarge it. And when we looked at that, we said, oh, well, what's the cost? And then we compared that to replacing the dam. And the cost at that point in time, just about four years ago, was they're about the same. But the downside of the repair option is that you're, we would continue to experience the decomposition of those timbers all the more over time. And so that issue never really goes away. And some issues with how well the spillway capacity would be improved is another factor. So we felt it was in our best long-term interest to replace the dam. We coordinated with FERC and DSOD, they agreed with that. And in the meantime, the dam is carefully inspected. We had a person on site just yesterday and will be out there with state inspectors on Wednesday this week. And we have an independent consultant that looks at it once every five years and I look at it myself on certain frequencies. So the dam is determined to be safe for continued operation at this point in time with our careful monitoring program that we have in place. So looking ahead at our proposed construction access and staging, this is property that the district owns in the vicinity of Silver Lake, but the old Cays Resort area, the dam vicinity itself near the left bank. And then on the right side here, near the entrance to Kit Carson Road, we're talking about. And then there will be some activity within the reservoir bed itself. So we're looking at having to set up coffer dams to basically de-water the dam site so we can work in the dry. So that'll be a part of the, of the spread of the project as well. Just to give you an idea what the ground conditions are like, this is looking downstream. So left is, to the left of the image. But as you see, as we go to the right, we get deeper in terms of the granite, the solid bedrock. And as deep as forty feet in some areas that we're going to have to contact and clean and establish the foundation for the new dam.
Is it like heading toward the north? That profile, is that like north-south or?
Yeah, it's.
Like toward the Silver Fork itself?
So to the left would be generally, well, downstream would be generally north in that, in that image.
And to the right?
So looking straight, so to the right would be, tend to be to the northeast. And please ask questions as we go. You don't need to wait until the end. So the, we're currently at thirty percent design. This is still a pretty initial stage where the results of our plans are still preliminary. But this is what the new structure may look like, something like this. Looking downstream in this upper image over here, well, this is the downstream side looking upstream. Sorry for the nomenclature here. This is the outlet, the new outlet building. There's an auxiliary outlet here. There's a fixed spillway crest that we're looking at. And you can see the undulations here. It's called a labyrinth spillway, but that effectively lengthens the spillway within a narrower van.
Will the public still be able to cross it after first completion?
Good question. And as you can see, there are plans for a bridge that'll allow our maintenance as well as public access across. And that's an important factor. And then looking ups, if we're in the reservoir, this lower image, we'd be standing in the, in our boat on the lake here and looking at the structure and it would look much the same, just here's, these boxes are the intake structures for, for each of the outlets, primary and auxiliary.
Will people still be able to fish from the dam, that structure?
Yes.
The whole length of it, pretty much?
You can see this bridge allows public access as well as district maintenance access, I guess.
Okay.
So this is another dam site, but that's what the labyrinth spillway looks like and kind of in operation, kind of exotic looking. But that's the plan at this point to, to meet the needs and I think it'll be interesting looking as well. So when we talked about coffer dams, there's kind of generally two types that are being considered right now. One's a rubber filled, or a water-filled rubber bladder. The other is a stack of ready rock bags like you get at Home Depot. And basically it's sealed with an impervious liner upstream, but these basically by their weight and stacked together form the structure to withhold the lake back. And then we're also looking at needing to raise the road bed in the Oyster Creek area. So as you go back, Kit Carson Road, just a, just a few, maybe a thousand feet or so, there's a low section to the road that when the lake gets up higher on that worst-case flood event, it could overtop the road by several feet. And that's, could affect a sensitive environmental area to the left here, now the picture, but we're trying to prevent that from happening. And so part of the project is to look at all the impacts of that problem maximum flood and address it with increased spillway capacity as well as taking care of a low spot on the rim of the reservoir. And our goal is to try to maintain access for the public along Kit Carson during construction, but we haven't worked out all those details yet. So the benefits of the dam replacement, it mitigates all the deficiencies, eliminates the fall-winter storage restrictions associated with spillway opening requirements. So I mentioned when those gates have to go open, we have less than half capacity to work with. So it improves our operating flexibility in terms of the range of reservoir that can be operated year-round. It gives us a higher confidence of dam safety and reliability, not only for the district but with our regulating agencies, FERC and DSOD. It lowers the construction and life cycle costs because we're not going to have to be like the repair option back here and dealing with rotting timbers in thirty or forty years. We're building a hundred-year, hopefully better, structure. This structure is in essence been maintained for a hundred and fifty, so we're looking to, to best or at least achieve that. And it's a shorter construction schedule as well as the longer useful life.
As you say, constructions, you know, what is the timeline that you're thinking that a construction would be?
We're looking at two thousand twenty-seven.
I mean, but for length, you know, were you having to put your coffer dam up, destroy the old dam?
Yeah.
And then completion of the project, would you?
So in order to install a coffer dam under the lowest flow conditions, we're looking at moving in around February. When it's coldest up there, there's snow present and the inflows are lowest. So the lake would have to be low under those conditions to move in, establish the coffer dam. One of the things we did last summer was to look at what's the depth of sediment in the reservoir bed immediately upstream of the dam so we would know how much of that needs to be cleared away to establish the coffer dam on a hardened, impermeable surface. So we have that information and we have the basis for good planning of that coffer dam and stuff.
There's actually quite a bit of water open, sorry.
Go ahead.
There's quite a bit of water in Feb, in that lake at February. How are you going to empty the lake?
Well, it tends to be the lowest period. And it's a period where we don't have any license or settlement agreement conditions affecting that. And it's a time of year when we have still all the, the winter snowmelt to recover and refill the lake. So it's really the optimum time. But back to your question.
Well, my question was that, I know PG&E just did Thaft Bay down off of Tiger Creek. And there was quite a bit of sediment pulled out of, just before the dam, you know, that has all washed down Colomy. So, you know, that's a lot of material sometimes.
It can be. And we're not planning to work much of an area. We know that we're working within kind of one to six feet of sediment depth.
Okay.
In that area. So I, and it'll be properly disposed.
Okay.
And back to your question of schedule, we're looking at basically initially February and working basically until the fall, probably November, it would be completion.
Okay. That's a short time.
So other project benefits in terms of the water storage, a more dependable water supply for the district. It reduces the risk of unplanned lake drawdowns for emergency maintenance as we were talking about, that upstream face and the diminished integrity of it. Avoids the potential for FERC and our DSOD impose lake level restrictions due to condition of the dam. So I don't know if you're familiar with it, but this is something that, if there's any loss of confidence with the integrity of the dam or something about its operation that brings them concern and it's significant, they can impose a lake level restriction where we can't fill the lake. And that is something that goes on in the industry and we, we're looking to avoid that. Potentially higher fall carryover storage in some years because we won't have to open those spillway radial gates. We'll have basically the, the full ice of the dam to work with year-round. Increased water supply for early season firefighting and some downstream flood protection benefits. Operationally, we're looking at a passive spillway so we won't have to be on-site to go open the gates as the storm is coming in. And we're looking at some, the supervisory control data acquisition, remote control basically of our outlet releases so that we can better change those according to changing inflow conditions. And we also have a more immediate, we have to also control the, not only the flow amount, flow rate, but also the rate that we ramp up or lower the flow. And that's called a, basically the ramping. And, and that's a function of something that we have to monitor closely. Right now, we have a downstream gauge that's a quarter mile downstream next to the Silver Lake West Camp ground. And so there's a lag time. And when that indication is, is read, we're actually looking at having flow meters on the outlet pipe that can give us immediate indication so we can control that in a better fashion. As far as lake level targets, in terms of our operational requirements, they will not change. So those that are under the license conditions, the relicensing settlement agreement, this League to Save Sierra Lakes agreement, all those will remain intact. And just to summarize what those are, according to the license and the relicensing settlement agreement, maintain the storage as high as possible through Labor Day. Labor Day through September fifteenth. We only make releases in the event of a CalISO power emergency where the power demands are extremely needed. September sixteenth is when, really when we can begin to use the water for discretionary purposes. And so, and we have these targets of, we must be at no lower than twelve feet as of September thirtieth and no lower than seven point four feet in that twenty-two point seven foot range as of November first. The other conditions with regard to the League to Save Sierra Lakes in this column is the criteria under the license that are in the, the settlement agreement. And over here is the league criteria. And what this means is greater than or equal to an above normal water year. So the Department of Water Resources will forecast the river flows for the American River into Folsom Lake. And based on that forecast, which occurs in the spring and up through May first, they determine the water year type and then the criteria. So there's five water year types going from wet to dry as it goes, wet, above normal, below normal, dry and critical. And so for the top two categories, wet and above normal, the league criteria is fourteen point four feet as of September thirtieth. So rather than twelve feet, it's actually higher under this criteria. And then for less than above normal, so it'd be below normal, dry and critical water year types, we're allowed to have, to retain thirteen feet or more water in the lake. So basically that's how that works. All that will remain in effect. It doesn't change how the project will operate. One nuance of Silver Lake site is the way water drains from the lake. It's not only from the dam, but it's also from that rim of the Oyster Creek saddle where we're going to raise the road. But that's a very porous zone and it can seep up to twenty cubic feet per second when the lake is full. And, but the water does meet a purpose downstream. One of our license conditions is that we maintain this schedule during the year depending on the water year type and the flows and depending on the month. But if you see this red arrow, that's indicating where that water generally seeps naturally from. We have no control of that. We do have control here through the dam and that release is generally for CFS or natural flow that we have to maintain. But combined, we have to maintain this schedule. So this water is measured at a downstream gauge plus this water through the dam have to equal this, maintain this schedule here. And that will not change. And back to the question of schedule, kind of the first few categories here are already accomplished. Project development, design criteria, diversion descent design, which is what I'm sharing with you today. And the geotech investigations were done last year, so those are feeding into the design. We've beginning to prepare our plans and review for, to meet the CEQA and NEPA environmental requirements. And then we're looking at sixty percent design by next summer, hundred percent design by December two thousand twenty-five. We have a FERC license amendment process to, because we're modifying a key facility of the project, we're hoping to accomplish that by two thousand twenty-six and also conduct construction bidding in two thousand twenty-six where a contractor can make its plans and be ready to go in two thousand twenty-seven. So, how can I fill them some blanks here? Any questions?
I just had kind of a background question. So the purpose of like Silver Lake and Cable's Lake, is that for water and power or just power?
Both.
Both, okay. So it is, so you do have, Eldorado County has a water right to?
Well, it's Eldorado Irrigation District who holds the water rights.
And that's for drinking water?
So consumptive supply as well as power generation.
Okay.
As well as the, the project flow requirement. So there are flow release requirements below each of the dams, but also at our diversion dam there where the Silver and South Forks come together.
Yeah.
We have a flow, in-stream flow requirement there that's maintained partially by the water storage in the lakes.
Okay. I just.
As far as roadway and highway stoppages, those would just be intermittent for delivery of material and things like that?
Yeah, we haven't dove into those details yet, but just my vision of how this would work and based on discussions I've had, I don't think we're looking at highway, you know, traffic control effects. You know, if we had to move some piece of equipment in that was really large, that might be very temporary. But for the most part, those staging areas are off the highway. The highway bridge itself is downstream of the structure and won't be affected by our work. So all that should be able to continue in service while we're underway. But just don't hold me to that precisely because we haven't, you know, had a chance to analyze the project in, in great detail yet.
How about the Kit Carson area? Cause there's like a road that goes back in there.
Yeah. And the Kit Carson Road is, it's our goal to maintain that open as much as possible. Certainly when we're doing, raising the road bed, you know, we'll have to look at how we do that in such a way that you can get the work done, but also allow as much traffic to go by as possible. So it may be that there's some traffic control in there. I wouldn't see a long-term closure to be necessary.
That was my question.
Okay.
Silver Lake side, Kit Carson site.
Supervisor Neto?
No, I just think, you know, I mean, you're going to have a, a time period where people are going to have a hard time using that, that particular section of lake, but it needs to be done to repair the lake. So just as long as they can get in and out of Kit Carson Road, that's really important.
It will be different, you know, it's, but we are very aware of the high use dependency on the lake for recreation and we enjoy it ourselves. It's a gem. And so we certainly are looking to preserve that resource, the aesthetics, the opportunities it brings for boating and fishing and so on. So we're still analyzing what the effects will be and how we can mitigate those.
And honestly, I was shocked to hear that the original dam was still inside the dam. It's kind of like.
Yeah, me too.
Well, you don't know what you can't see, right?
Well, I also appreciate the fact that you're still going to allow the public to, to go across. There are so many dams that, you know, people are not allowed to go across anymore, but that is such a gem sitting up there. You know, people are able to go fishing and camping on, on the, not camping, but, you know, picnicking alongside the dam. So that is, that is one gem sitting there.
So when are you going to start notification to the public, to those people that, a lot of people recreate continuously over the years? So when would you start your signage and things like that to say that it's coming?
We are, now that we have the thirty percent design, which we just received a matter of weeks ago, we have also the basis for a project description to begin evaluating not only the effects, but be able to describe what is proposed and what the effects may be to the public. We do have a posting on our district website that has some project information, but it's to a degree comparable or even less than what you saw today. It hasn't been updated as of the latest design, but it is something that we are currently working on and expect to, over the next few months, to, to be building pieces of that public outreach.
You know, one thing, another question. You said there's going to be a bridge across the, oh, the amuletment for people to access the dam. Is that going to be, I guess, fisherman-friendly? I mean, so I'm, you're interested, because you can have a bridge, but is a bridge actually going to allow people to fish off that dam?
Yes. It's currently planned to be fifteen feet wide. So it's much like, well, it's a little bit narrower than the current dam crest, but it's plenty of room to allow that kind of access and use.
And there won't be like high fences or something like that between that bridge and the dam?
There's no need for that.
Okay.
And just to justify or further clarify that, it's not in our interest. We may have to clear debris out of the spillway during the course of operation when the lake is full and during a big storm, whether it's ice, whether it's, you know, logs or a lot of timber debris that, that builds up and won't flush itself. And so we're probably going to have to, you know, have abilities to, not probably, we are planning to have ability to put a backhoe on the bridge and be able to reach down into the lake and, and break up or remove that debris. And so we're. And so, we're basically looking at something that's like a railing or a, or a short wall, sometimes referred to as a parapet wall, but something on the order of three feet, three and a half feet high.
Okay, cause that's kind of Grand Central Station there. Every summer you drive by, there's a lot of people out there.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Any questions from the public? Anything from Zoom? Well, thank you very much for the presentation and thank you for coming all the way over.
Yeah, thank you.
It was very much appreciated.
Was, was there a letter of support or something?
We already, we were.
We already did that.
Did we pass it?
Yeah, we, we passed it and we invited them to come in.
Okay, all right. It's been, it's been a whole two or three weeks. I forgot.
Understand.
And we greatly appreciate that. That was an application for a Department of Energy grant to help fund the, the dam construction. So, thank you all for that support.
Thank you.
All right.
On to five B, Code Enforcement, discussion of possible action relative to officer safety standards as required by SB two ninety-six.
Good morning, Board Supervisors. I'm Michelle Geller with Code Enforcement.
Morning.
Good morning. If I got this right. Okay. SB two ninety-six requires jurisdictions to implement officer safety guidelines and procedures for anyone who falls under the umbrella of code enforcement, which includes any government employee who enforces codes and issues citation or files formal complaints. This also requires other departments such as building and environmental health to implement officer safety guidelines and procedures for their inspectors. Ensuring the safety of code enforcement officers and related non-sworn enforcement job classifications is now a state mandated safety priority. Individual code enforcement officers and personnel have a responsibility to act in a manner that promotes safety while adhering to agency's policies and procedures. Not all dangerous situations can be anticipated or avoided, which is why maintaining a state of constant awareness and preparedness, no matter what task they are engaged in, is key to increasing officer safety. Other necessary elements to increase officer safety include policy and procedure development and training and safety equipment, which is included in this document for the code enforcement department only. Code enforcement officers work in many different environments, each for varying types and levels of risk. Due to the rural nature of the area, some of the current risks I face as a code enforcement officer for Amador County include terrain, topography, atmospheric conditions, wildlife, plant life encounters, extended response times from law enforcement, resourceability and availability limitations, communication equipment limitations, radio and cell phone, vehicle and vehicle access limitations. These potential challenges are in addition to well-known risks to code enforcement officers nationwide, including illegal drug activities, cultivations indoor and outdoor and drug labs, sovereign citizens, vacant dangerous buildings, pets, mold and asbestos, chemical exposure, and physical attacks. Most of the safety guidelines and procedures provided in this document are the current steps taken in while in the office or out in the field. Due to the inherent risk that code officers face, it is highly recommended that code officers are provided adequate tools when faced with immediate danger or imminent danger. In the last three years, four code officer, code enforcement officers have been brutally murdered during the carryout of their regular job duties. One of these officers were right here in Sacramento. The current stats show, provided by the Code Enforcement Officer Safety Foundation, COSF, that ninety-one percent of code enforcement officers are killed with a firearm, and out of those ninety-one percent, eighty-six percent were killed in the field. When indications of impending violence are present and recognized, whether in the office or in the field, code enforcement officers make every reasonable attempt to leave the scene as quickly as safely as possible. But if they are unable to retreat and self-defense becomes their only option, the best possible tool should be provided to, to give the officer a chance to de-escalate the situation and The tools listed in the personal control device policy are OC spray and a kinetic launcher, the LE version. The tool tools are the most effective and cost-effective in the market, efficient and cost-effective in the market. An alternative option is the taser, which the city of Elk Grove code enforcement officers use. However, the taser has a shorter range, only holds two cartridges, needs to hit the skin to be effective, waterproofing is limited to spraying water, incapacitation time is only five seconds and can cost over two thousand dollars. The two tools proposed here include the launcher, which has an effective range of eighty feet, seven rounds, twenty per CO2 cartridge, can be completely submerged. Projectiles are the size of a paintball, which I have an example here.
So, is that like a rubber bullet?
Uh, no, it's a kinetic, so it's hard, but there's also chemical air intent that you can get as well.
Right.
Uh, projectiles are the size of a paintball, does not have to hit subject to deploy the air tent, incapacitation time can be up to forty minutes and costs under five hundred dollars.
Big board members should have to go through being hit with that so they know what they're approving. I've already been through it.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll let you go first.
I've done more of it than you have.
Okay.
Uh, the launcher is currently being used since January of this year by the city of Tulare's code enforcement officers. There's eight of them, as well as over a hundred and sixty-six other agencies, including the US government, and is an acknowledged standard PPE item, Personal Protection Equipment. These tools would only be used when an animal or person displays intent to engage in violent, aggressive action or suicidal behavior towards the officer or public. The code enforcement department works closely with the Amador Sheriff's Department. It is common practice for the sheriff officer to accompany the code enforcement officer on standard inspections or appointments where there is known risk involved. Unfortunately, risk is not always known, and it is not feasible for a sheriff officer to accompany code enforcement for every call. The protective equipment discussed today allows for protection of life in the case that an unknown risk presents itself when a sheriff officer is not present. These tools would be deployed only if the officer feels their life or another life is in danger. In addition, training and certification will be required for any code enforcement officer to possess these tools. Currently, I have over sixteen years of experience. I am certified as a COSF Code Official Safety Specialist. I'm a certified trainer for the kinetic launcher, and I have my certificate of completion for non-lethal defensive chemical agent training. I am qualified to use and train others with these devices. There are no additional upfront training costs. Authorizing access to OC spray and the kinetic launcher is an important step in establishing a standard of safety for code enforcement officers in Amador County. The hope is that this equipment will never have to be used, but allowing access to standardized safety equipment is a noteworthy goal. Any questions?
I guess when I was going, reading through this, is, would there be a need for you to wear like a body cam during any of these incidents, especially if you had to use any of these tools or, or equipment?
That is completely up to you if you're going to require me to do that. I've already thought that in my head, that I would probably do that on my own if you didn't require it, just for my protection.
Yeah, cause I guess that's what people will, will, let's look at the body cam video. I mean, if, maybe not in every circumstance, but if you think you're going into a situation where you, you have to put on your vest and carry this equipment, I don't know if you'd bring it with you every, on every call, but.
I would wear, I wear my stuff at every single call. Cause you never know, yeah.
All right.
So, I would wear it on every call.
You almost have to have eyes in the back of your head, though, because as one of these people that was, was murdered, it's said he actually inspected a restaurant and passed it, and then he was stabbed to death.
In his vehicle.
Yeah, that doesn't make much sense why they would do that afterwards, after he passed them, but just never know.
I was gonna say, until you leave the scene, you should be aware of your surroundings at all times. Can't be complacent, and you can't say everybody's nice. You have to act as if everybody's going to harm you till you leave that spot, and that's when you can relax.
Supervisor Crew?
Sounds like we need something.
Supervisor Neto?
Yeah, I think actually a body camera would not be a bad, bad thing.
I think the body cameras probably.
And I think as far as the burna launch, I'm not sure about that. I mean, it's not just a chemical irritant, um, deal, it's also, it's, it's kinetic energy. So, basically, you've probably got like a forty-five rounds, probably eight hundred feet per second, and that burna launcher is what, about three hundred, three hundred and forty, it says. So, it's, it's, it's not just like you're going to tap somebody and say, don't do that. You're going to be hitting him pretty hard.
That's the point if my life is in danger. Remember, the stats show ninety-one percent are killed with a firearm. So, I'm asking for something that, obviously, I'm not asking for a firearm. I'm asking for something that's next to that.
Well, I think it's something if, if we do authorize this, it has to be used only in a very critical situation. Sometimes people say things when they're mad, you know, and you gotta, gotta look at what the situation is, not just say, hey, you give me, you give me an opening and I can blast your, blast your one because you said this or that. Did they say something like, you know, I'm, I'm going to blow up this whole outfit? Okay, are they moving? Are they coming at you? Did they threaten you? Yeah.
That's correct. If they're showing intent to hurt me and come towards me, then that would be a reason to deploy it. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that'd be a concern to have. Sometimes people, you know, they stand there and there by the door and they jump up and down and holler and yell and scream, but are they really, that'd be one, one, one thing I'd be a little bit, you know?
Well, that's what the, the body camera would be great for is.
It would.
Yeah.
You know, that's, you know.
That would be an example that I wouldn't be using it if someone's just sitting there and threatening me and jumping up and down, so.
Okay. And I can see why you'd like to have something, cause, uh, it's, code enforcement is, is a hard job. Um, and you're basically, you're doing your job. Sometimes people may not always appreciate what you're doing, because you're probably bringing pain to them monetarily or, you know, physically, maybe not physically, but monetarily, um, so they can be contentious. I get that.
Hey.
Actually, they brought it on, upon themselves. You didn't do anything.
That's true, yeah.
Any questions from the public? Anybody from Zoom?
If we want.
Hey, we're back. Oh, sorry.
Uh, I'm just here to support Michelle. I used to work for the city of Elk Grove Code Enforcement, and I also did code enforcement in the state of Colorado. I work for the city of Jackson now. And there's, there's many instances in the field where, I actually don't do code enforcement anymore for those reasons. Um, I chose to take a different path, because it is, it can be a very dangerous line of work. And I did a ride along with Michelle when I was still working for Elk Grove. I met her at a Casio conference, which was a code enforcement training conference. And she gets out in some areas where she literally is on her own. Um, there are areas where her cell phone doesn't work, there are areas where her radio doesn't work. There's, I mean, response time in Elk Grove, even where I got nervous, if we have, you know, we have a emergency system that we can hit to get an officer response, and they're there within minutes because you're in Elk Grove and you're surrounded by tons of officers. Out here, she gets where, even if she did have a reception to get assistance, it might take them twenty minutes, half an hour, forty-five minutes to get to her. And that's, that's plenty of time for some really serious things to happen. So, I know one thing she talked about with, I think that burna is a really good support for her, because it is only used in the most dire of circumstances where she cannot remove herself. And it would incapacitate a person where she doesn't have to be extremely accurate. When you're nervous and in your, I mean, I'm, I'm nervous and I'm just standing here in front of you guys. You know, but when you're out in the field, you have someone yelling at you or someone coming towards you, putting you in a dangerous situation, your accuracy with a taser, probably not very good when you're already like in a scary situation. So, a burna, you know, she just has to get somewhere in their general vicinity, and I don't know if you've ever been around any kind of OC spray or anything like that. If you're in a room where that gets deployed, you're kind of choking already. So, you know, she doesn't have to be as accurate. She can incapacitate them in a way that is non-lethal, and she's able to remove herself from the situation in a much safer form. So, I would have felt a lot more comfortable having this kind of a tool when I was a code enforcement officer, rather than just the taser and OC spray. So, I think it's a really good tool. You know, that's why a lot of agencies are switching to that. And as she said, there was a hundred and sixty-six agencies already using it. Um, and was it Tulare?
Tulare.
They're the local one that she knows that she mentioned is using it as well. So, I would be interested in, the, the likelihood of needing to use one of these devices is very low, but the one instance that you needed could be life-saving. So, probably have to stay on that one.
Thank you. Um, could you state your name for the record, please?
My name's Carleen Kirkpatrick. Um, yeah, I can actually write it down if you need me to.
Yeah, I think there's a sign in. Thank you.
We could, if you want us to add the part about body cameras, we could do that and just bring the whole thing back to, to next meeting and put it on content.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Direction given?
Yep.
Body cam and unit?
Yep.
On to five C.
Actually, I do have one more question. Do you guys have a preferable color that it has to be? Is there's black, there's orange, there's yellow? So, I wanted to.
We're talking about the?
The launcher.
Burna?
Okay. Probably not black.
Well, any other color but black. If it's not black, it's going to be very, you're going to hold that on your person, right? So, it's going to be visible.
Yep.
So, somebody is going to know you're carrying it. That's the thing. If you want somebody to know you're carrying it, if it's black, it, it may not cause as, as much of a reaction from somebody thinking that you're.
I could cause more if it's black.
Out armed, but that's kind of up to you. Do you want somebody to know that you're carrying it?
Yeah, I would, I would have it on my side, cause that's the easier way to react. And it's going to be a lot harder if I gotta pull my vest up and try to pull it out when someone's coming at me.
But if it's like orange, aren't they going to think that it's, um, not non-lethal?
Yeah, it could be, yeah. Yes.
Okay, whereas if it's black, then you have that.
Yeah, I do have that element.
Um, up to the board.
I mean, if it was me, I would want it to be black so that.
Me too.
It did not.
Okay.
Give them the impression that, um, that you're carrying a weapon and you're there to shoot them.
Okay. I wanted to confirm to make sure that it was okay with whatever color I choose.
I don't want black.
Black, 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 black or brown, whatever.
Okay.
Yeah.
On to five C, discussion of possible action relative to potential changes to county code regarding code enforcement. The current process requires that complaints from the public go to the appropriate department, which is the responsibility for forwarding a complaint to code enforcement. The proposed code, excuse me, the proposed process would have code enforcement collecting all the complaints and coordinating with the various departments to decide whether a complaint warrant a follow-up. This would make the process less confusing for the public and less cumbersome.
All right, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Michelle Geller with Code Enforcement. Uh, due to the nature of other classic classifications within the county that falls under the definition of code enforcement officer, such as.
such as building inspector, planner, environmental health inspector, a strong recommendation, supported by all the directors in the Community Development Agency, is being made to revise the current municipal code to transfer more responsibility to the code enforcement classification. This would allow code enforcement to respond to initial complaints, removing the majority of safety hazards from those other classifications, and giving code enforcement the tools and the support needed to gain voluntary compliance in a more efficient and cost-effective matter. Our current process is as follows. The complaint is filed with the affected department. The affected department investigates the complaint. The affected department sends to the property owner or tenant an NOV, Notice of Violation, with a deadline to come into compliance of ten to thirty days, and is sent first-class certified mail. The affected department inspects the property for compliance after deadline, then refers case to code enforcement if compliance is not met. Code enforcement issues an administrative abatement and notice to record letter with a deadline of compliance after thirty days, and is posted on property and sent first class. Code enforcement establishes scheduled inspections for compliance. Case is presented before the hearing board. Case is then brought before the Board of Supervisors to hear the hearing board's recommendation to bring the property in compliance. Board of Supervisors issues an order. Some options include abatement or to obtain a court order. And then any further action may result in obtaining case fees, abatement fees, and placing a special settlement, and recording a lien on the property if they fail to pay those fees. Here are the reasons for such strong support to change the current code enforcement process. It's fiscally irresponsible and redundant. It's just too many departments doing the same thing, staff time, travel, administrative and mailing costs. It's inefficient, too many hands in the pot. Complainants are confused when told it doesn't go to code enforcement and they have to call multiple departments to file a complaint. There's confusion to the property owner when they receive multiple letters with different deadlines or don't receive all the affected department's letters. Each department has multiple trips out to the property. Cases are held up before going to a hearing when multiple departments are involved. It doesn't make sense to take a single case multiple times to a hearing. The E-process program used to manage cases cannot handle the current code process. It's confusing and not user-friendly. Code enforcement's hands are tied until all department's cases are referred to code enforcement. Code cases are confidential and should not be available to all staff. Effective departments are not trained in code enforcement or officer safety practices and do not have the same safety measures as code enforcement. An example would be direct contact with dispatch. Any employee under the code enforcement umbrella is required to be a certified in the state of California, which requires officers and employees to take three module courses, officer safety courses, and a continued education course in order to stay active. In addition, they must have their eight thirty-two PC arrest and firearms post certificate. As to date, the eleven-plus employees under the effective departments do not have any of these certifications or have gone through officer safety training. Finally, the code enforcement process has no teeth. Departments and code enforcement spend a lot of time trying to gain voluntary compliance, and there are no consequences or steps in the process that encourage property owners to comply. Cases are sent to hearings and the county does not recoup any costs. The staff time, the travel, the mailing, the staff costs of the department heads, board members, et cetera. Here are the proposed changes to the code enforcement process using the flow chart example. The complaint is filed with code enforcement. Code enforcement researches and does a site inspection to verify violations. If needed, code enforcement will work with the affected departments to verify the violation. Example, I would check with the building department to see if a permit was issued. Code enforcement will send either a courtesy notice, which is issued and sent in situations that do not warrant a notice of violation, but to educate. It also can be used if access to the property is not available, or the code officer can send a notice of violation with a deadline of ten to thirty days for compliance, which will be sent first-class certified mail or posted on the property if needed. After the deadline, code enforcement will then send an administrative warning notice with a deadline of ten to thirty days for compliance, which will be sent first-class certified mail or posted on property if needed. If compliance is not met within the deadline, code enforcement will then issue an administrative citation. Options are to assess fines on a per-day basis, similarly to that of the county of Calaveras, or to issue an increment of a hundred, two fifty, five hundred, seven fifty thousand, or a combination of both. They will have a fifteen days to appeal the citation. In addition, other tools used at this step or recordation against property, civil penalties, cease and desist orders, criminal prosecution, non-issuance of new permits, double permit fees assessed per the California Building Code one oh nine point four, and Amador County Municipal Code fourteen point oh four point oh fi- oh five zero, and a third site inspection fee. If compliance is not met after administrative citation has been issued, the next step is to send a notice of non-compliance with a deadline of ten to sixty days, which will be sent first-class certified mail or posted on property if needed. They will have fifteen days to appeal the notice. Additional tools used would be a forced site inspection fee, double permit fees assessed, recordation against the property, and/or civil administrative penalties. Finally, if it is sixty days without compliance, and it can be less, discretion of the officer, or if there is an appeal, an appeal fee will be assessed, the case would go before the hearing board and then to the Board of Supervisors for action. Here are the reasons why we support this change. I have the support of the entire Community Development Agency. It would be more consistent and efficient, one department working with all the departments. Cases are handled in a timely manner with one violation letter, and point of contact is code enforcement. It will lessen the number of staff hours, travel costs, admin costs, and the costs of staff training requirements and equipment. Code enforcement, if needed, can take departments on inspections for clarification and verification. In addition, when departments go out to verify violations that have been removed, they should have code enforcement assist them in the inspection which provides additional officer safety. Administrative citations are a highly effective tool in achieving voluntary compliance early. It avoids costly hearings and the process of abatements in which we currently have no funding for. It would help provide the funding necessary if an abatement is needed. We could place these fees in an abatement account should the need arise, and we could use these funds to eliminate violations. I recently spoke with Calaveras County, who have had their administrative citations in place for the last two years and have had great success in gaining voluntary compliance early. All notices from the administrative citation onward are able to be appealed. Inspection fees would be assessed after the third inspection, and staff time, travel costs. I did wanna get an example, I just filled up my work vehicle last week and it was a hundred and fifty dollars to fill my gas tank. And I do a lot of multiple inspections, um, at each place that I go out and do, um, violations at. Appeals, there should be a fee to appeal a notice with the option to submit application for financial hardship. Fact is, that appeals and our hearings are costly for the county. With a hearing board, it involves many hours preparing documents, including three department heads, two attorneys, the affected departments involved in the case, and the code enforcement officer. Then it proceeds to the Board of Supervisors, where additional documentation must be prepared, and involves five supervisors, two attorneys, the affected departments involved in the case, and code enforcement to give a final verdict or extend the case. If an appeal is won, the property owner can receive a refund of the appeal fee. If the appeal is not won, the fee can pay for the appeal hearing, or the hearing board can elect for the fees to go towards the administrative fees or inspection fees. At any time in the process when an appeal is filed or an administrative citation is issued, we can offer the property owner a compliance agreement that can waive the administrative citation fees to gain compliance. In addition, at any time in the process, any fees can be waived at the discretion of the officer. Code enforcement is not out to make money, it's to gain voluntary compliance. And these tools are necessary to achieve early compliance. Properties that are in immediate health and safety risks can be done quickly. Finally, the new process will improve relationships within and outside the departments. The affected departments would have more time to focus on their main functions. However, there's only one code enforcement officer for this large county. The part-time code compliance officer position under the building department should be hired to support these changes. The additional officer would help in the additional workload and provide coverage for training, injuries, et cetera. The position also would continue to monitor the expired building permits, send out the necessary notices, and provide additional officer safety should the code enforcement officer need additional help on an inspection. Any questions?
Uh, Michelle?
Mr. Chairman, I, about half of this stuff in here is new to me, and, uh, I'm not endorsing it at this point in time. So, we could bring it back to admin if you want. We had talked about the reorganization, but we hadn't talked about changes to funding. We haven't talked about where that funding's gonna come from. Uh, we haven't talked about a number of things. We, we haven't talked to the county council about a number of those things either, so.
I did have the process of changing and adding that stuff in there. The only thing that's adding in there is the administrative citations.
The, the last section there of adding a staff was not in the administrative meeting that we had.
Adding the.
Adding another staff member.
Oh, well, I just, sort of thought I said that we should add another code officer in there.
That wasn't part of it.
Just because there's one person, yeah.
So do we just bring it back to admin then?
If you wanna talk about it, we can talk about it. It was, uh, the, the way that code enforcement, the complaints are handled needs to change. I, I agree with that completely. The, uh, as far as, um, what, what, uh, participation the board wants to have, what authority they wanna give to the code enforcement officer to, uh, to levy, uh, citations is up to you. And that's, that's the lot where the line needs to be drawn, and that's what we need direction for.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think, I saw the civil administrative penalties assessed, and that can be a slippery slope, um.
That's already in the code that we can use that.
I understand that.
Supervisors crew?
The flow chart part doesn't bother me at all, but how we're gonna pay for the extra staff. And I think we do, there's some more questions that need to be answered before we could give it a fair hearing.
Okay, you said we can split this apart and get the.
Well, uh, there's nothing to actually, there's nothing today that needs to be approved if you were gonna give direction. We've gotta bring, uh, uh, an ordinance back, cause the code has to be changed.
Right.
In order to fix that. We can proceed, uh, down that path with regard to the, the flow chart, and, and how, uh, and have the complaints come into code enforcement to begin with, um, so that everyone isn't deemed a code enforcement officer. Uh, I think that is, that is very, a very good idea. The, uh, the rest of it, as far as using the administrative hearing process and, and, uh, things like that, um, that needs to be talked about further either here or in admin.
You know, something else I'd like to look at at some point, and this might be a good time to bring it up, I think, is, um, right now complaints are confidential to protect people that complain. Uh, one problem I've seen with that is, a lot of, I've seen these cases come around and some may be mad and say, you know, my neighbor, my neighbor Pat Crew, he complained against me. In reality, it may have been the other three neighbors farther away. So they're mad, they think their next-door neighbor ratted him out, for lack of a better term. When in reality, it was somebody, sometimes they might be five, ten miles away making a complaint. Um, I'd like to see complaints, um, made public, um, if the board says yea or nay, especially if they say nay. One thing I'd, I'd like to have looked at, if a complaint comes from a county employee in the course of their duty, that it would be made public. Now, if that county employee, maybe possibly, if the board doesn't wanna have complaints, all made public.
Well, the other question is whether it's anonymous complaint. Right now, we take anonymous complaint. Would we stop taking anonymous?
I'd, I'd like to. I think it's, um, yeah, it's probably in a nutshell. Um, I always, sometimes you have chronic complainers, they go around complaining about a lot of things that really kinda don't matter that much. But it's their pet peeve, and, and they wanna make a stink, and there is every avenue for them to do so. This way here, if somebody has a real issue, they'll say, hey, I'm gonna make that complaint, I'm gonna put it in the record, I don't like this, and here's why.
There's a reason for anonymous complaints though sometimes. I mean, some people are afraid of their neighbors and what might happen. I had anonymous complaints filed against me, and finally I found out, I didn't know who the person was. I'm pretty sure I do know who it was, but they got a cease and desist filed against them by the building department, cause all of her complaints were bogus.
And I addressed that early on, Richard, and wanna say, sometimes people say, I've got the county here and they've got anonymous complaint against me, and I'm gonna blame my neighbor. Well, sometimes it's somebody five or ten miles away making that complaint. So that person is now mad and hella at their next-door neighbor, and the neighbor didn't even do it. Or neighbors, I should say. They think somebody in the general vicinity made a complaint. I know we had that deal a while back, it's been a number of years, but somebody's going around complaining about old animals in the county. And you have a lot of people, they love their animals, so they have a horse that's twenty-five years old. They do everything they can, they give a special food, they have, they do whatever they can for the horse. Well, the horse is just really old, really skinny, and at some point they fall over and pass away. Or they, or they have the horse put down. Well, this person went around complaining about every skinny horse in the county. And it had all kinds of people upset, and it, I think it was somebody out of Eldorado County, actually.
That wouldn't be a code enforcement item, though.
That'd be animal control.
Yeah, but it's, it's very similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it forces staff to go through the jo- their job, and they find out the complainant is wrong.
Well, yeah, but people have to hire vets, and have a vet come out and do a health check on the horse, and, and something that they're mad, well, and my next-door neighbor, I think, you know, complained about my horse, well, it wasn't the next-door neighbor, it's somebody, I think they're out of Eldorado County.
Well, I don't wanna stifle staff in doing their job, though, like you said, it was a couple of years ago. Yeah, it comes around every once in a while. I had it happen ten years ago with an old horse, and we were feeding it this stuff that I should've just shot the horse, cause the stuff was so expensive, but I didn't. Um, and the same complaint came in, it was skinny and standing out in the field.
Yeah, I don't, I, what I'm saying, it wouldn't, if you make complaints public, it would not stifle staffing, and the job is still the same job. It's just, people, I think, would think, think twice about making a, um, a complaint willy-nilly. If it's something really serious, they'd still make that complaint.
I mean, how many, how many complaints do you have that are just untrue? Would you say ten percent or twenty percent, or are most people pretty?
Most of them are pretty accurate. There's a violation.
Yeah.
Yep.
Every once in a while, you're gonna get that person that's gonna, gonna file false complaints.
I'm not even saying false complaints, there's a lot of things you can complain about if you want. Um, it's just, it's a matter of, it's really a problem.
Well, that's our job to go out and inspect. If there's a violation, there's a violation, we send a notice, if not, we close the case.
I guess the point I'm making, like, you ever hear the story about, um, a lady called a, called a, um, made a complaint about the next-door neighbors undressing in the nude? And so officer shows up the window and says, well, I can't see anything. Well, yeah, but you have to lean out the window and look around the side of the house, side of the house, and then you can see them. So it's kinda like, that's the point I'm making. If something's really a problem, or somebody's looking for a problem.
Further discussion?
Yeah. Um, well, for right now, for.
Can I make one more?
Sorry.
The, the Calaveras model, you know, I don't, I don't wanna be like Calaveras all the time. Yeah, some of those things are good, but I don't wanna have that continuous day after day, it's just the fine just keeps adding on, I just.
Well, no, you have, you have the option if you wanna do it in increments, so you can send the first notice with a hundred dollars. They have a deadline, they don't get it done by then, then you send the next one.
I think incremental is more.
Yeah.
Way to go for our county. We're not trying to punish people, we're trying to change.
Correct. I'm just trying to give, there's options and ways that you could do it, that a lot of different jurisdictions do it. Like I said, we're the only one that I know of, and I've got a case deal every year, that does not do administrative penalties. I already did a presentation with you guys earlier that it works. It's a lot more effective to getting people to do it early instead of having it go all the way to the very end, which I hear a lot now. I'm just going to go to the board and wait, so it, it's costly and it shouldn't be that way.
You can do progressive penalties, but not do them on a monthly or do them on a bi-monthly basis where they know they have a month to remedy the problem rather than on a day.
Just depends on what the violation is. If it's a serious health and safety thing, it could be the 10 days. Um, normal, if it's a normal thing, yeah, it could be 30 days and then the next time we do it, it's just to get them in. Like I said, I have the discretion, so if I go out there and it's the third, third inspection, which I'm saying should get an inspection fee by that time, I can say, "Hey, it looks like you can get this done in a week. I'll come back, won't charge the administrat-, you know, the administrative citation or the inspection fee. Just get it done. I'm here to get them to comply. It's just a tool that makes it go a lot faster and works to have that ability to do so."
We haven't had many appeals to the board, if I can recall, have we?
No. You actually, out of the time that I've been here, you've had one person appeal. And they are giving up their right by not appealing. So, it's saying that there is a violation, so when we come here, that's when we're supposed to say, "All right, there's a violation. Let's move over with an action." But one person has appealed since I've been here.
Yeah, I didn't think there was many.
Yeah.
Supervisor X?
Uh, yeah, Michelle, going back to the original, um, presentation. So, your scheme for, or your reorganization of code enforcement, is this done by other counties?
Yes.
This way?
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
And, uh, so you're not reinventing the wheel?
No, not at all.
Okay, all right.
As I said, we are the only one that I know of that does not do this. Everything I'm saying is available, all those options I could do right now. It's just that it's, there's nothing in the middle that I can do as a tool to get people to comply. So, it's always going to go to a hearing.
So, having code enforcement as a key point of contact and then kind of, you know...
Everything moves a lot better, it flows, they talk to me, I have them work with the other departments. I, you know, I have it, so I know what's going on, there's no confusion.
Okay.
Again, everybody stays safe because I'd be the one going out and doing it, but then you're providing me the tools to get things done a lot faster instead of drawing out cases. We keep it the way we have it. My caseload will triple, you know, it will go along because, and then it will affect what I have to do being one person because I'll have to move everybody to a hearing instead of having something in the middle that actually works and gets people to comply, so.
What is the fourth site inspection fee applied?
If I go to their site on the fourth visit, I can charge them an inspection fee. So, starting on the third site visit, which is usually the administrative citation visit, visit, that's when I can start charging inspection fees because I shouldn't be having to go back to the property more than three times, um, to get them to comply. And again, that's at the discretion of me if I want to charge that. But starting on the third inspection, I should be recouping those costs of driving out to the site. Um, because at that point, you know, they're not complying.
Yeah, well, the first inspect, first, I mean, is it just going out to look at it, correct?
Correct. And then you have the notice, you have the notice of violation, then I go back out again, and then there's the administrative warning, and then the third time is actually the citation. In my experience, everybody gets done by that administrative citation time because they don't want to get fined. Case closed. Done within less than a month and a half, case is done. Not six months to a year on how these cases are doing now.
And then it's a matter of basically what that fine would be then? Is that your discretion or are you talking about 100, 250, 500, 750?
It's what you guys want to set up. You can do per day or you could do increments. You can make it 100, 500, 1,000 if you want for your process. Most jurisdictions would do the 100, the 250, the 500, the 750, to 1,000, so it's a progression. But most people do comply at the hundred dollar stage because they don't want to pay the fine or inspection fees.
Okay. Let's bring this out to the public. Anybody in the public want to speak?
My name is Candace Jayne and I have, um, put in a complaint about a, a neighbor. I went into, or first thing I did was I called the office. I was sent to a couple of different people to talk to on the phone. They, um, called me about three days later and said, "We can't inspect the property because it's not accessible from the street." So, I knew that the person was gone, so I went over and I took 20 pictures of the property. And I went in the next day and I took the pictures to them. They put it in the computer. They told me that I had to know what each violation was. I have no idea. I don't, I'm, I don't do that. Um, I'm just a person who lives there and next door. Um, does it have food debris? Does it have, um, flammable stuff? I, you know, just that kind of thing. I don't know. I just know that there are piles of junk everywhere. There are properties, are lean-to's that have been built with no permits. They're falling down. Uh, there's a garage that's fallen down over a truck. There are six vehicles or seven vehicles. Okay, so they said that they were going to send the guy a letter. I know the neighbor, he doesn't know I made the report.
Speaking to that, to the gentleman over here, if we...
Could pull the mic towards yourself?
Pull that mic.
If we, if we knew...
And, and sorry, speak your name again, I'm sorry.
Uncle Ed Jayne.
Okay.
Two N's, J-A-Y-N-E. We're husband and wife. Excuse me. The man that lives next door to us, he's actually, he's a nice guy, but he lives like Sanford and Son. He's a pack rat. He cannot get rid of anything. He does side work for A, B, and C and whatever materials are left over, he brings home. Uh, he does not have a garbage can on the curb. He has a trailer that he sort of kind of fills up with garbage and then after a period of time, may take it to the dump. Uh, once it's full, I don't know what he does with his garbage. He has a large, uh, uh, it's a John Deere size of a, probably a, a Cat D4 tractor with a backhoe attachment on it, where I know, he's told me he's buried debris on the property. So, the property is full of everything he's brought home from side jobs that he's done, garbage, trash. Uh, he's living in his second, fifth wheel. The first one, he set it on fire. And then the day after the fire department came out, he proceeded to burn the rest of the debris that was there. Uh...
And buried.
And then the fire department came out and he got fined for that because of this material that he burned where, uh, what do I want to say?
That's a...
Air quality stuff, okay, contents. The balance of what didn't burn in the trailer once the fire department put it out. So, basically, the property is just full of garbage, debris, trash. Uh, his refrigerator for his trailer sits outside. The bear pulled the door off of it and pulled all the garbage, the food out of it. Uh, it's still there, the way the bear left it. These are the kinds of things.
And these are things that, the bear thing happened since I went in and talked to the county.
But I was going to mention that if I knew, I, I disagree with, with what you had said. If I knew that we were going to be posted, you know, that we were the complainant, we wouldn't be doing it.
No.
Because I got to live right next door to this man.
But, and, and consider the fact that he almost burned up the trees in our area. Um, these, this fire was 40 feet high into the air and we have tons of, um, trees around us. So, we have more than just, oh, we're mad at the neighbor. We have the, the safety issue that we're concerned about.
Truth is, you know, I'm not really mad at him. He's a nice guy.
No, we really like him.
He helps me do projects on my house since I cannot do a lot of the things I used to do. Uh, and I give him a few bucks for it now and then and he says, "No, it's not necessary because we've helped each other over the years." It's just that I have been after him for 15 years...
Yeah, we've been trying for 15...
To stop dragging shit home and clean up his property. And I get a lot of, I'm working on it, a lot of promises. The seven vehicles that don't run that are actually now full of trash because it's a place to store it and hide it.
Let me go on with what I was...
Yeah, please do. I'm just frustrated.
Okay, so I'm, I'm basically the person that went into the office. I'm basically the person that went into the office and I'm, I'm much more that type of person that will speak out and say, you know, "This isn't right." I went in, I made the complaint, that was July 14th. I have never heard one word since. I know he got two letters because he told my husband he did, but he didn't go pick them up.
Yeah, he doesn't want them.
I went into the office, we went into the office a couple of days ago. Nobody in there even knew what I was talking about. Nobody had any idea what I was talking about, even though I saw them put the 20 pictures into the computer. Um, I was sent to two different places that day also. Each of those department, departments didn't know what I was talking about. And I finally did get to talk to Michelle. I told her at that time, she, she looked it up and then I guess, I don't know if she had known before or if it'd never come to her. But I told her about a truck they had because they have about seven vehicles on the property, but they also had one out in front that was on, you know, county property. And I told her about that and she, um, immediately came, maybe three days later, put a green sticker on the truck. I called the kid, this was the kid's, the son's truck. I called them and I said, "There's a green sticker on your truck." And he said, "Oh, my God, I got to have that truck for parts." And I said, "You better come get it." And he came the next day.
Okay, so you're in support of the code enforcement process?
Oh, yes, I'm in, I'm in, uh...
Doesn't work.
I don't know what they're doing or how they're doing it now, but I know it's screwed up and it's the worst thing I've ever experienced. I worked for the Housing Authority of Contra Costa for 22 years as an inspector and I, I've never heard of anything this ridiculous.
Well, I thank you for coming up and speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else in the public?
Board of Supervisors, again, um, this is Carleen Kirkpatrick. Um, I just wanted to support Michelle on just a couple of things. I'll make it really quick. Um, in regard to, um, requiring people to disclose who they are when they're making a complaint, um, as a former code enforcement officer, that is, that raised serious concern for me when I heard that. I understand it, it would be nice if we could trust that everyone is the kind of person who's not retaliatory, who doesn't use drugs, who isn't a criminal, who wouldn't do things, um, in response to someone making a complaint. However, I think you put your reporting party at danger, in danger when you require them to give their name or you leave violations out there that are not addressed because people are too afraid to report them. And so, um, I really, I think if people want to share their information, that's great. As a code officer, I appreciate that sometimes because you're able to follow up with the reporting party and get some more information. However, sometimes they live next to someone that they know or fear would be more retaliatory and they deserve a right to be able to report the incident as well. So, um, I think that's good. Regarding the process she presented, um, I worked for two other agencies and code enforcement is pretty standard. Um, I didn't really see anything that is out of line or different from everything that I've seen and used in the past. Um, code enforcement officers are granted a great deal of discretion and we need it in the field because every person is different. Every person responds to a citation or a violation or a notice differently and every person kind of needs a different type of motivation to respond. Um, giving her the ability to issue citations doesn't mean, okay, tomorrow she's going to go out and cite people $100 and go out the very next day and cite them $250 because she can. That's not the way it's designed. It's designed as just another tool in her back pocket when what she's already doing isn't working. And so, what it does, it gives you an ability to kind of give a little extra nudge to those people who, who don't care to bring their property into compliance until they start seeing dollar signs. And that's not everyone, but, but some people, it is that way. And until they see something, they're like, "Oh, that's going to cost me money." Well, now they're going to do something to improve their property. Um, and she also would have, you know, the discretion to rescind that, which I've used a lot too. Um, when I was doing code enforcement, I very rarely issued citations. I was able to work with people and talk with them and, and gain a lot of compliance that way. But the 10% that that doesn't work, um, an administrative citation, even just the hundred dollar one is enough motivation to get many of them into compliance. And when they communicate and you know what's going on with them and they, they comply very quickly, you can even rescind that site and say, "You know what? Thanks for working with me so well. I'm going to go ahead and remove that citation for you, um, as a courtesy." And, you know, now you're the, you're the great code enforcement officer supporting the county and, you know, you did your job, made everyone happy. So, um, anyways, that's just my two cents on her process and, um, thank you guys for hearing me out.
Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, we're back to the board. Um, looking at allowing this to go back to, I mean, excuse me. We're allowing, uh, the code enforcement change, is kind of what I've heard so far. Um, but the other part of it for employees would be going back to the admin section. Is that the direction that's...
I think we want to bring the whole thing back to admin to finalize exactly what it is you want to do. There, I think there's some, some merit to giving her, uh, certain discretion. The question is how far? Where does that, where do you want that line to be?
Okay.
And that's what we need approval for. So, we'll, we'll drop an ordinance and we'll bring it to admin.
There you go.
I, I just want to, um, so there's a, changing this changes a lot on the other end, Rich, which is, um, how you collect, uh, how, at all, the county's going to collect these fines if, if they go through, uh, how the appeals will work. Most jurisdictions who do administrative fines, they have administrative judges. So, we go, the county's going to have to engage or hire, uh, it can't be staff. It's, um, so it, it, there's a lot to it. So, if you want us to develop that whole process in an ordinance, we can, we can do that. But if there are questions about, you know, initial questions, I just want to be clear on the direction. If you want us to change our ordinance to follow what's sort of laid out here with the, with the fines upfront, um, and then potential abatement at some other stage. So, you're, you know, potentially having two, two things with two appeals. Appealing the fines, appealing the abate. Eventually, there's a, maybe an abatement order if we got that far. That's appealable as well. There's processes, the, the, it's cumbersome. I won't disagree that, uh, the process we have now with the abatement hearing board and as a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, that's laid out in code. That's so it gets to Board of Supervisors. There are other ways to do it, uh, doesn't necessarily have you in the loop as much. Um, and, and we can look if there's other ways too, but...
Yeah, I, I like the abatement process as laid out by Michelle and...
With the fines.
With the fines, but I want the fines to be progressive, like 100, 250, whatever you stage, but stage them incrementally and not out years. I mean, a couple of, down to maybe a six month period where the fines get progressive, depending on what it is and depending on if it's life threatening.
Yes, it's usually 10 to 30 days would be...
Yes, it's usually ten to thirty days would be each citation.
And, and of course, for the high country seasonal, as far as sometimes we can't, can't get things done.
It's, that's all taken consideration when I work with someone. I work really hard to make sure I can get them, you know, whatever the resources or anything like that. Again, I'm not out to do it. I could see if that's the case, then we come up with a plan. Like I said, one of the options is do a compliance agreement. So, then they come in and say, this is exactly the plan we're gonna do. This is what I'm gonna get it done. And then, that's what we have in writing from them saying that's what they're gonna do.
Okay.
That ma- makes sense, because I'm sure every situation is probably different.
Yep.
What there is to, you know, i- is it just, you know, picking up, uh, a garbage bag of trash? Or does somebody, maybe they inherit something where somebody might be like the, the neighbor has a lo- a lot of stuff? And all of a sudden, you know, somebody's has something and somebody complains and you gotta clean it up. It might take a while.
Mm-hmm.
So, is everybody okay with bringing us back to admin with?
Yep.
The policy change?
Yeah.
Okay, direction given to staff? Hey, we are gonna take a five-minute break and we will come back to doing the, uh, public hearings. Ready? Okay, we'll bring this meeting back to order. We are working on public hearing, six A, survey department of public hearing for utility easement abandonment and adoption of resolution for the abandonment of a certificate of merger for Del Rapini Construction, a California corporation. This property involves, uh, in said, uh, merger are lots twenty-one and twenty-two of Pine Grove Bluffs, phase one, as recorded in the subdivision maps.
Um, Mr. Chair, I've done work for Mr. Rapini, so I recuse myself.
Okay. So, you're gonna recuse yourself of the next two?
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Roger Piro, the county surveyor. What we have here is three action items, but it's really one project. And Del Rapini Construction, a few years ago, created, um, Pine Grove, uh, Bluffs, you, phase one. And what they're doing through lot line adjustments and through mergers is redoing some of the lots, reconfiguring some of the lots in that subdivision to make them larger, more attractive, and to fit into the retra- uh, terrain properly.
And so that they'll be able to be sold.
Yes, I, I did not get a chance to go out there personally, but.
Yeah.
I presume that's the case. Always small isn't best.
Yeah.
But, uh, i- i- anyway, it was fairly complicated for us to go through all the proper procedures. But, they have been gone through and I've carefully checked it. And I'm asking for the board to approve six and then seven, then eight, how you wish.
Hey, any questions from the board? Any questions from public? Any questions from Zoom?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Hey, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero one. Okay, back to the board for discussion.
Um, I'll make a motion then to approve the, uh, mergers and the, uh, adopt the resolutions.
You have a second?
For the abandonment and the merger.
For the abandonment of the public utility easement, yeah, and the, um, and the certificate of merger.
Second.
Uh, Richard Ari, seconded. Uh, call for the vote. All four?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hey, four zero one. Hey, we're on to six B, which is virtually the same thing.
Yes.
Um, open public hearing. Anybody from the public wanna speak? Anybody on Zoom?
Move to close public hearing.
Okay. Who was the second?
Hey. Uh, you're seconded.
You seconded. I didn't, yeah, I didn't.
Okay.
Call for the vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero one. Hey, do I have?
Move to approve the resolution approving the abandonment of public utility easement for Del Rapini and the certificate of merger.
Second.
Hey, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, we're on to six C, surveying department, public hearing for the public easement abandonment and adoption of resolution abandonment of certi- and certificate of merger for Kevin Scott. Yes, sir?
Yes, that's, that's a separate one. It's, is just a very.
Gotta bring supervisor.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that, that's a straightforward merger. And just to make the, the lot more buildable that he wishes it to do. And we see no objection to it at all.
Sorry, supervisor.
I, I have a question. Greg, is this concerning the homeowner association at all?
Uh, this is not the one that we had talked about.
Not the one. Okay, thank you.
We're on to six C, supervisor Neto?
Yeah.
And is this a straight merger for allowing a better buildable lot?
Yes. Not a problem.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to speak? Anybody from Zoom? Hey.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Three five zero. Back to the board.
Move to approve the resolutions for abandonment of merger.
Second.
Hey, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Always good to see you, Roger.
You too, brother.
What do you want?
Uh. Okay, we're on to six D, planning department. Consideration of Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt a resolution to amend the general plan by adopting the unincorporated areas portion of the countywide six-cycle housing element.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning, morning.
Working with the planning department. Uh, staff is happy to have completed the, um, uh, update to the county's housing element as required by the government code. It is the only element of the general plan that has a mandatory update schedule. Right now, we're on a eight-year update schedule, which the state refers to as the six-cycle going back, uh, many years to nineteen sixty-nine when they first started mandating, um, adopting housing elements. Uh, the purpose is to identify policies that the county can implement to accommodate the three hundred and seventy-seven units of housing that the state anticipates we will need during the twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-nine, uh, planning period. Um, it was prepared with the benefit of, of considerable community input, input and stakeholder input. Um, something we couldn't do during twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one due to, uh, various state mandates. Uh, um, the housing element went through a, a second thirty-day public review period in November, October, November of last year. And then was submitted to Department of Housing and Community Development. And they, uh, had a ninety-day review period. And I believe on the eighty-ninth day, we received a, a list of, of, of about, uh, fifteen or sixteen pages of, of comments and, and recommended, um, amendments to the, to the draft. So, those have been incorporated into the draft and are back, um, for public review, public comment, and, and finally, board's approval. Uh, the planning commission reviewed, uh, the document on October tenth. And they adopted a resolution recommending that you adopt a resolution to amend the general plan that would include the update to the, uh, to the housing element. Uh, with me is Beth Thompson with DeNovo, who did all of the heavy lifting on creating the general plan and drafting it. Not just for the county, but we did this on a county-wide basis as we did last time on the last cycle. So, that everybody's not trying to basically do the same document at the same time. And we, you know, all enjoyed some cost savings by, by doing it this way. Um, so with that, I'll let, uh, Beth proceed with the presentation of the housing element. And then we'll both be available for questions, um, immediately after.
The, the planning commission approved this, but it was three to two, right?
Yes.
Hey, we can talk about that later.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here before you this morning. I'm Beth Thompson. I'm a principal of DeNovo Planning Group. And we have the pleasure of working with, uh, Chuck and the rest of your planning department on your housing element update as well as the other jurisdictions. And I'll just quickly go through a few of the steps of the process, in the process, and some of the information that's in the housing element. And so, we're at the final phase, which is hiding behind that little Zoom, the Zoom pictures. But, basically, we've gone through all of the steps of collecting all of the data to prepare the housing element, going through a public participation process where we got feedback from the community on what the housing priorities and needs are. We did both workshops and an online survey, so there are a variety of ways that people could participate. And then the individual jurisdictions also held meetings to allow people an opportunity to comment. Those were available to anyone in the county when the housing element was out for public review. So, there were a lot of different opportunities throughout this process for folks to come in and let us know what their housing concerns, needs and priorities are. The public review draft went to the community for a thirty-day review period. And then it went to the state for a ninety-day review period. All of the comments received from the state have been addressed. There's a new appendix added to the housing element that identifies each of those comments and how they've been incorporated into the housing element. So, every jurisdiction, every city, every county, every town in California is required to adopt a housing element. It's one of the required elements of the county's general plan. And it is on a separate cycle from the rest of the general plan. So, you're updating it more frequently than all of the other elements of the general plan. And it's intended to ensure that the county addresses its housing needs and has a short-term plan to accommodate its housing needs and to remove barriers to housing construction and rehabilitation and preservation. The housing element is required to be eligible for a variety of state funding sources. So, community development block grant funds, home funds, I believe the No Place Like Home Fund. There are a number of funds that the county uses. And you do have to have a certified housing element to be eligible for, to participate in spending activities for those programs. And then, there's also another remedy that came, uh, the Housing Accountability Act also passed what's called the builder's, what is referred to, it's not called, but referred to as the builder's remedy. And when you don't have a compliant housing element, it allows developers to come in and make requests that they would not be allowed to make under your adopted general plan and zoning code. So, it's definitely good to have an, a certified and approved housing element in place. So, there are, there are some benefits to having it. And there's a lot in the housing element. So, the housing element consists of two primary components, the housing plan and the background report. It also has an annex for each jurisdiction and then the appendices. The housing plan is the meat of the document and that it is the county's commitment to the housing actions it's going to take over the six-cycle. So, it identifies the county's goals, policies and regulates, so policies are kind of like a regulation, what, what you will do. And then also specific act, actions that you'll implement. It includes a timetable for each of those actions. You'll notice that it's really different from your last housing element. There is a lot more language regarding how the actions will be implemented. A lot more timing and a lot more commitment. The state's looking for that in this cycle. So, what passed in the fifth cycle, we've had to beef up quite a bit in the sixth cycle. So, you'll see that your housing plan is more lengthy with more requirements in it. The housing plan has to address a number of topics. It has to ensure that the county provides adequate land to meet its housing needs. It ensures that the county has programs to facilitate affordable market rate and special needs housing development, rehabilitation, maintenance and preservation. It addresses governmental constraints on housing development. And it also includes actions to affirmatively further fair housing opportunities. And that's a new requirement in the sixth cycle. In previous cycles, we looked at fair housing more generally. In this sixth cycle, there's very specific state requirements to affirmatively further fair housing so that people can ha- access housing throughout the community.
Could you expand on that a little bit, exactly what that is?
There's, there's a lot to it. So, basically, what it's intended to do is to ensure that people have a fair and just method to access housing, that housing is provided throughout the community, that you're not concentrating, say, affordable housing in areas with low access to resources, with poor environmental scores, with lack, lack of jobs, and that you're not concentrating upper-income housing in areas that have the best environmental conditions, access to the most opportunities. So, it's really ensuring that you're providing housing for income groups throughout the county for a variety of resources. And also that you're not concentrating persons with a disability or seniors in areas that have less access to resources or poor environmental score. So, there's, in the AFFH chapter in, in the background report, there's a whole discussion, a lot of maps of the different demographic characteristics of the county and different types of opportunities in the county. And it looks at how different concentrations of persons by socioeconomic characteristics relates to the various access to opportunities.
Sounds very Orwellian to me, to be quite honest.
It's, it's very idealistic. Obviously, every census tract in the county isn't going to have the exact same distribution of persons by race, senior status, um, marital status, all of those, all of those factors. And different areas have different constraints. You know, you, your areas with more slopes, you're not necessarily going to have high-density housing in areas where you have constraints to, for accessing or for building that housing. So, there are definitely some reasons why can't, the county looks the way it does. And some of those are not based on discriminatory practices. They're just based on the geography of the county or in some, some cases where the cities are located and where more services are located. When you're citing senior housing, you usually want seniors to have access to services. So, you wanna make sure that that housing is in the areas with the services and not necessarily where they're going to have to shovel snow multiple months out of the year. So, there's, there's a lot that goes into it. And the state's approach doesn't necessarily take all of that into account. But, we've, we've included the AFFH analysis and then there's a program in the housing element that specifically addresses that. And I'll be.
I, I would expect a progressive administration to come out with a progressive plan like this because it's being dyslexic though, in that they want us to come up with a plan for the unincorporated area where it's a high-fire danger. So, really, that's the, the worst place to put concentrations of people. And we have a major water supply issue in this county.
Right. And so, one of the things you'll notice that the housing element does in the county, you actually, and I'm kind of jumping ahead here, that you actually have adequate housing sites to accommodate your arena. So, when you're looking at how you're accommodating your housing needs, that each jurisdiction in the county has assigned a regional housing need allocation or its fair share of the county's housing needs by income group. And so, for the unincorporated county, you've been assigned three hundred and seventy-seven units for the very low and low-income categories, which are very low households that earn less than half of the median income and the lower-income category, the households that earn fifty to eighty percent of median income. Those categories have to be accommodated, they total about a hundred and seventy-one units, have to be accommodated by higher-density housing. And because the county's a more rural area, that's ten units or more per acre. So, we're not talking thirty or forty. not talking thirty or forty units per acre, but higher, you know, higher than your single-family homes in general, so higher-density housing. And in, in reviewing all of your sites available in the county based on your current general plan and your current zoning, you have adequate sites to accommodate your three hundred and seventy-seven units at the densities needed. So you actually have more than enough capacity, you could, you can accommodate two thousand units or more. And so you have enough capacity, and you don't have to go and rezone sites, so you're not identifying new sites in your high-fire hazard areas and the areas with the worst water supply constraints, so you're not identifying new sites, you're just facilitating development of existing sites.
We can't force people to build, though, so just by having the units identified in the plan, is that good enough if not one unit gets built?
Well, it's not good enough, but what we'll do is, so I'm going to quickly go through. The housing plan-
Okay.
-has a number of actions that the county will commit to. It includes a county-wide housing working group so that you can work with the other jurisdictions to implement your housing elements, so that there's a lot of repetitiveness between the housing elements. So rather than, just like in developing the housing element, rather than having each jurisdiction call developers, let them know what their housing sites are, you can kind of do that. All the jurisdictions can do some of those things at once and in a combined effort, so it's a lot easier, and you're not having every jurisdiction reach out to developers and losing interest because you're not really kind of consolidating and streamlining and focusing their attention on the county in general. So regarding the, the supporting the housing, the housing plan has a number of goals, and each of those goals has programs. So you have Goal H1, which addresses housing diversity. This is the one where you ensure you have adequate sites. You also promote a number of housing types. You promote accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units, and FB9, which is two to four units per a single-family lot in urban areas. You also have programs to encourage affordability targets in your specific plans and to encourage affordable housing land acquisition. Getting to your question about is it enough to just have the land? You also have to- Oh, there we go. You also have goals to preserve your existing housing, so there is actions to preserve and improve your existing housing supply, that's Goal H2 and associated programs. And then you have a goal to affirmatively further fair housing. This goal includes programs to, that we talked about, to encourage people to access housing fairly and equitably. It also includes affordable housing resources for renters and owners, and it includes measures called housing mobility enhancement, so those promote housing production, so rather than just saying we have enough sites, you'll have measures to encourage housing production, and this includes reaching out to developers, letting them know you have land available if they're interested in seeking state funding, supporting the state funding applications where it meets the county's goals. And this also falls into the Goal H4, Advancing Opportunities. So there's, there's measures in the housing element to not just have the sites, but to promote the sites and to work with developers in the community to, to seek funding for those sites. The county doesn't have to build the land, it doesn't have to fund the development, but the housing element demonstrates how it can be an active partner and encourage more rental opportunities in the county, more affordable housing, housing for your seniors, housing for your farmworker and agricultural worker communities. So it provides resources and assistance to, for those, for those housing types. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, but what happens if a community where something's going to get built comes unglued, like Ione has a proposal to build two hundred and forty units of Section Eight housing? That would change the whole complexion of Ione, and people are rightly so, they're opposed to it.
So when there's different types of housing approvals, so where you have a parcel that's been designated by your general plan for a specific type of housing, or it allows specific uses, and then your zoning code also allows those uses, you have different types of permits. You have some uses that are permitted uses. So where you have multifamily housing as a permitted use, the county would have to allow that housing if it complies with all of the standards and regulations in your zoning code and meets all of the policy requirements of the general plan. Where you have projects that come forward and they want a discretionary application, so they want to rezone land, or the housing types require a use permit, then you have a lot of discretion as a body, and, and, you know, the Planning Commission and the board to look at that and say, okay, we like these parts of your project, but these things need to be changed, they need to be revised, and we'll place conditions on the project. So you definitely have flexibility on some projects, but not all, and that's not because of the housing element, it's because of your general plan zoning code and then state law that requires certain housing types to be allowed. And yes, it, it doesn't always make the community happy, and it's best to work with developers to structure that project in a way that really can benefit the community and not be something that's a difficulty for the, for the neighbors to have.
And they, they've done a lot of good programs for lower-income residents in, in the Jackson area, you know, on, uh, New York Ranch Road. They're, they're built well and designed well, so if that's the way, it's done fine. But to just go up and build two hundred and forty units is-
It's a big change.
A big change.
Yeah, that's a big change, lots of, lots of new cars on the road, lots of people using water, attending schools. So there's a lot of planning that needs to go into making sure you have enough services when you're accommodating new development, that you're really supplying the needs of your existing residents and business community, and then also accommodating the people you're planning for.
Well, it's, it's, how much and how fast are you going to change the community? Ione has a Section Eight housing already, and, but it's probably designed for about sixty, not over two hundred.
Right. And that's, they have a large parcel that's zoned for high-density housing, so their general plan and zoning code both planned for housing there. I don't know that the community understood quite the number of housing that could come forward on that parcel.
But if the residents say they don't want it, and the city council votes against it, then the state could come down on them, correct?
So, there, there is the potential, so a developer can go to the state and say, hey, they're not complying with their housing element, they're not complying with general plan law, and so yes, the state could write a letter, the state could, they, there is a housing element enforcement task force at the state, and it's, it's called the Housing Element Enforcement Task Force, but they also enforce state law related to housing that your housing element addresses. So yes, they, a developer could seek satisfaction in that manner. But hopefully, if you have a process, a project like that, you can work with the developer so that it's amicable, and you both benefit from the project and not have it be something that's difficult.
Depends on what the zoning is for that property. If it's zoned that way, they may not have a lot of, a lot to say.
Right. Yeah, but if it's zoned a certain way, you have to allow certain projects, so that goes for way more than just housing. So, um, so Goal H4 addresses advancing opportunities, and Program Seventeen's a really lengthy program in the housing element. It addresses changes to your development code, your zoning code, and it addresses a lot of requirements of state law. So it adds new definitions and accommodates housing types where state law explicitly requires those housing types to be accommodated, and then it also takes measures to accommodate a variety of housing types so that you don't have just one type of housing predominantly being built and accommodated, but you're allowing a range of housing types. A lot of the housing types you may not, may not see on a regular basis, but they are accommodated through these changes to the zoning code. Goal H4 has a number of other programs, and I won't go through all of the programs because we could be here for quite a while. The background report is really lengthy, that's the second section of the housing element, and that's a lot of data. The data in the background report was used to inform the development of the housing plan and programs. It includes a housing needs assessment, an overview of constraints and resources, and it references the inventory of sites, it includes the analysis related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, and it also includes a matrix that evaluates the implementation of the fifth cycle, the twenty-fourteen to twenty-nineteen housing element. And building on the background report is the individual annex, oh, yes.
Can I talk about the background report for a second?
Absolutely.
Spend all the time reading through it, I want to talk about it.
[laughing]
Um, but my issue is, maybe it's a cut-and-paste issue, but, um, when you get in, I think it's on page two twenty-one, all the new language that was added in blue, that's the county section, but it says, uh, over, over and over, the city shall, the city shall.
And then page-
That's, that's the Amador County, that's the Amador County section, County of Amador section. Amador County, it identifies it on page two oh-six, and then on two twenty-one, it talks about the city, the city.
Scroll to that, exactly.
I think it was just a cut-and-paste issue where it should've, it should say the county, not the city.
Oh, so this is the, the table?
The tables that were added in blue.
Okay, so-
But they're in the county section, because if you go down further, then you get into the, the city section, next to City of Ione.
Sorry, it takes me a while to scroll through the many pages.
Yeah, I understand. But it looks to me like it was just an issue of putting the same data in, and it just needs to be changed from city to county.
And so some of these, like above the city of Ione, I-
Well, I'm looking at what was presented to the-
Blue, that's been added, that whole, that's, I think that's Amador City, so all of that-
Um, Amador County was on page two oh-six, the headline of Amador County. So that's the Amador County section, but then it identifies the, the city and the changes in blue.
Okay, so those changes in blue, there's actually a header that disappeared. Those are all for Amador City, so yes, they're not for the county, so there's a header that should have popped up that said Amador City, and it's not showing up between the-
No, it, I think it shows up, but the header for Amador County, you see what I'm saying? Is it identifies-
Yeah.
The, the city, though, it says, under the county.
Okay, I, we will double-check that, and we'll make sure that that is fixed before it goes to the state.
Well, I'm looking at what was sent out to the same tables for the Planning Commission.
So, when you're going through the Amador County, it goes through Programs HE1 through HE, I think, fifteen, and those are the county-specific programs, and so it talks about in each of the accomplishments, the county's accomplishments under those programs.
Mm-hmm.
And then from page, and on mine, it's two fourteen, it jumps to all of the language in blue with Program H1 Land Supply, and that's where it starts with the city shall, and those programs are all for Amador City.
Okay, then it needs to identify Amador City then.
Right, and we'll add that heading, and it looks like-
Okay.
-it disappeared and when it-
Thank you.
Yeah. So the housing element includes an annex for each jurisdiction, and that includes your more detailed information. It has a summary of the demographic information, it includes an analysis of the county's zoning requirements and your development standards, and then it also includes the inventory of sites and the affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis. Your packet in front of you only has the annex for the county. Each of the jurisdictions will adopt its annex separately, it keeps your document from being even lengthier than it already is. And then, as I mentioned, we made a number of revisions to the element to address the state's comments, and those are summarized in, in the element. There were changes made to the housing plan to improve the effectiveness of it, to increase place-based opportunities to address the affirmatively furthering for housing requirements, and then also Program, well, Programs Nine and Thirteen both address that, and then Program Five was revised to specifically refer to the Circles Leons Act when disposing of housing sites. And disposal doesn't mean that they're being given away, it just means you go through a specific process to either sell or lease the property. The background report was revised to include additional constraints to housing sites, including environmental hazards, airport safety zones, and open space conservation easements. The annexes were revised based on the state's comments. In the previous cycle, the annexes were really brief, and this cycle, the state wanted to see each jurisdiction having more specific information in its annex, so we really fleshed that out a lot. So you'll see that there's a lot of new language included in your annex to address the housing needs profile, and more detail on the affirmatively furthering fair housing issues and how the sites relate to the AFFH issues. So, as I'd mentioned, we're at the end of the process, so this has already gone out for public review, it's gone to the state, and the document's been available now on the county's website for the community to look at. So following the adoption of the housing element, it will go back to the state, and the state has a sixty-day review period during which they either certify the element, they ask for revisions, or they send a letter not certifying the element and asking for more revisions. And basically, during that review period, we work with the state, if there are minor revisions to the element, we can make those, we can work with Planning Director Beatty to make those revisions and submit them back to the state so it doesn't have to formally be readopted. If there are major changes they're requesting, of course, those would come back to the board. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any more questions you may have.
Were you at the Planning Commission meeting?
You already had, I was at the Planning Commission.
So what were the issues with the two commissioners that voted against it?
I think a concern was the state's heavy-handedness with treating all jurisdictions similarly, and so just all of the requirements from the state to accommodate and, and approve housing. Just, just the method of it, I think, was more the concern. I don't know if you just want to add anything to that?
I would agree.
I almost get back to my Aurelian comment, maybe?
Yes.
I think my planning commissioner felt that it was forcing, forcing affordable housing in the areas where maybe it wasn't the best thing for those areas. Maybe that's, you can call that heavy-handed, but I mean, that's kind of been done in Ione, where on Sutter Lane, affordable housing was built on one side. What it did is it drove down the values of the houses on the other side of the street because about half of those houses are not kept up very well, and they have cars up on blocks.
Element recommend, the housing element recommends a dispersal, not, not a concentration, but of, but of all housing.
That was a dispersal of about twenty houses, and it significantly affected the, the values on the other side. That, that's a big problem with their plan.
And one of the things to keep in mind is that the housing element is not creating new sites. These sites could already, a housing developer could come to the county tomorrow and propose a project on your site.
But you're incentivizing people to go in by paying them-
You're-
-to create, uh, lower-income housing.
You're facilitating it by reaching out to developers and encouraging it, but you're not, the developer could come to the county regardless of the housing element because you're not rezoning sites and ask for sites on those properties. But I, I understand, the housing element also includes measures to encourage the rehabilitation and maintenance and preservation of housing, and that's really important when you have areas that are, sometimes it's not even affordable housing, you might just have an area with a concentration of lower-income residents, and they may have a harder time making ends meet, maintaining their housing. And so just ensuring that you're linking those families and those households with resources to improve their homes, to maintain their homes, to make emergency repairs can be a benefit to the whole neighborhood, not just to that individual house, household that's receiving the assistance.
Well, that's kind of the utopian statement.
It's, there's not always enough funding to help everyone, but it is good to promote that and to encourage that.
I want everyone to be able to have a house to live in and be comfortable, but when you go in and you have a reciprocal negative effect on houses that are nearby and the values that, that those people have worked hard for, that's where I kind of find error in it.
And, and I got to add to that is that you were sitting in here while we had our code enforcement officer doing, doing her presentation, and did you watch the eyes of my county, uh, admin come unglued when there was a nu, one position added to her, you know, to the thing, you know? Staffing is a huge problem in Amador County, because it's, it's something we can't afford, and so you're asking us to, to help somebody rebuild their home. How do we, where do we get funding? How do we get part of that done? Where does-
Right.
You know, where is that coming from? You know, we're, we're begging and borrowing, trying to pave our roads right now, let alone trying to rehabilitate a home.
Right. And that, that, that is difficult, and we've really focused on the housing element on providing those programs through like state, state-funded grants and federal grants, so you have the community development block grant-
Right.
... and the home program, and those provide funds for housing rehabilitation.
But as you go through here, a lot of it just says general fund, general fund, general fund, general fund. Well, there is no general fund directly, and, you know, to administrate any of that, a lot of those requirements.
Right, and, and we would anticipate that, that there would be grants available to fund those, just like the Wicklow Way project is. That shows up in the general fund as a revenue expenditure, but it shows up on the front side as, as a revenue before-
Right, and, but what I'm saying is, as you're looking at this procedural book, it should say that. It should say, we, we're, you know, funding source, undetermined grants or anything else, you know, not that it's general fund right off the bat.
And we could add language to say prioritize, you know, general fund slash prioritize seeking grants to implement and have something that addresses that.
Yeah, because it's, you know, I'm looking for the standpoint, I, you know, in case somebody gets upset about this general plan that we can't follow it a hundred percent, you know, why is it our block? Well, you, you use your general fund. You know, I'm afraid a judge down the road would say, you said that you were going to have general fund, match this. Well, we don't have the general funds to sit there and push this along.
And we're not anticipating a, a new general fund light item for, for housing element- And we're not anticipating a new general fund light item for housing element or additional staff. But if those funds become available, we would, you know, certainly be able to seek them out.
I understand, but you know, those are grants. Those are, you know, CDBG type of things. And that should be identified on those steps of this plan. And that's kind of my two cents. Only thing else I would like to do under the initial plan is page seven. Third paragraph from the top. Uh, last line, SB nine only applies to urban areas and urban clusters in Amador County. In Amador, okay, I misread it again. Sorry about that. In Amador County, Ione, Sutter Creek, and Jackson are the only designated urban areas. Okay, never mind. I read it too quickly and now the second time I read it, I'm like, okay.
And that's okay. Senate Bill nine has caused, you know, a considerable amount of confusion as to whether or not it applies in the unincorporated area, and it does not. And that's for everybody's benefit. That's the statute that allowed people to ministerially split parcels and create duplexes out of existing single-family houses or build quadplexes on single-family lots. And it doesn't, does not apply in the unincorporated area.
Who has a crew?
Well, it's a wish list and I think probably water and sewer are going to be as much, depending on how the general plan moves, housing element moves forward, as anything else. At least in Amador County.
To do any, you're right, to do any kind of affordable housing, you need density and you need utilities to accommodate, absolutely.
That's kind of step one, isn't it?
You know, my two cents on it? No offense, but it's just, it's a bunch of mishmash. I mean, it's the government getting way too damn large, in my opinion, what's been mandated for the county to do. It's like some, getting back to my Aurelian philosophy, looks like some Schraman professor from Berkeley has arrived on the scene. Leave people alone. They'll figure out where they want to go, what they want to do, how they want to do it. And it's just making, we're spending a lot of money on these little plans, a lot of time, without really much positive outcome, in my opinion. It's all for naught, basically. It's, somebody mentioned utopia. Utopia is wonderful, I mean, it's a wonderful thought. I'd love to see utopia. Reality is that we're not going to see it. It's just not reality. I don't know, it's just, I guess we have to adopt this thing at some point in some form, but it's, I don't like it. Nothing against you or Mr. Beatty.
Don't say a good person.
You're going through the process and we got to do it, so.
It's activity masquerading as achievement.
That's it, beautiful.
Can I use that one?
Yes, you can.
One more point, if, so with this plan, the property is all designated, different lots and areas. It's all zoned accordingly and we're showing the state we have adequate units. We're going to work with the development community, but let's say we can't get one person to bite. Are we going to get penalized if we don't have more units built?
There's not a penalty at this time if you don't build units. Well, I shouldn't say there's not a penalty. There's no monetary penalty. There's no requirement to, you know, do anything further to develop housing other than for the jurisdictions that have a harder time meeting portions of their arena, there are streamlining requirements in state law. So projects that come forward would be subject to streamlined approvals, meaning that you apply objective development standards and you process the projects more quickly. But that actually applies to a lot of projects anyway, so it's not a huge change. It just means you would fast, kind of fast-track those projects in their review.
Why is, I think it's Butte County is being sued by the state because why? They did not adopt a policy?
If you don't adopt a housing element, I'm not sure. I'll have to look at the Butte County lawsuit. I know that the state has been slow to enforce. They send a lot of letters and they work with jurisdictions to get you into compliance. They don't want to come out and they, you know, to Amador County and say, you know, "We're going to sue you for not implementing your housing element." They're going to first probably send you a letter saying, "Hey, we noticed this is happening and that you're not implementing your housing element. What's going on?" But your housing element implementation, you have objectives for units, but those are really based on working with developers, obtaining funding, and the developer providing the housing. And so if you're doing your part, you're performing outreach, you're assisting developers that come to the county and say, "Hey, we have this project on land that's cited and zoned for housing. Can we get you to support a home grant or our tax credit application?" Then that would come to the board. And if the board said, "Oh, you know, we know we zoned this for housing. We know we planned for housing to go here, but we don't want your housing here." And that developer complains, that can be problematic for the board. But if you're treating every developer fairly, you're looking at housing not for who's going to live there, but for just, is this consistent with the county's requirements? I don't, I don't think you'll have a problem. And a lot of, there are a lot of measures to implement in the housing element. There's a lot to do. A lot of that are things that the county can already do. And it's just working that into your staff's practices, into outreach. And a lot of it can be done. We included that first program where the jurisdictions can work together so that each jurisdiction isn't performing outreach, isn't looking at what funds are available, isn't creating a flyer for their website, but that all the jurisdictions can do that together. That will really assist the jurisdictions in actually implementing their housing elements. And you do an annual report. So when you go through your housing element each year, you can be able to check those things off and say, "We've done this, we've done that." And a lot of those things, they do take some time, but they don't take a huge amount of time every year. Like, once you have your process in place and you've developed your working relationship with the jurisdictions to implement things, it should go semi-smoothly.
It just kind of looks like they're treating one-size-fits-all. They're using that model and it doesn't work to look at us like LA County.
Very, very much so. And that's, we hear that from a lot of jurisdictions throughout the state. Even affluent areas, the ones that are built out, have been given some huge housing numbers. And so they're like, "Okay, we're supposed to accommodate a thousand units." You know, we have no, literally like one acre of undeveloped land. Everything else is either conserved open space or it's land that is on steep slopes and high-fire hazard areas and just isn't suitable for high-density housing. So a lot of jurisdictions are feeling the difficulty of working with the state in this cycle in terms of either demonstrating sites or complying with a lot of requirements that don't necessarily reflect your population and the needs of your local residents.
Yeah, I saw where Marin County was throwing a fit. I thought it was rather ironic, actually, that they were very unhappy because they were being told they had to do yada, 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 and they didn't like it. But I think they're probably part of the component that foisted this little mess on us. So maybe it's fitting.
And I'd like to add on to this is that, you know, my whole district is very high-fire-threat area. So that's my whole district. So we haven't had a development since the nineties in my whole district. I don't have a developer even thinking about building homes in my district. And so that's a hard thing. You know, I have a lot of businesses that want to deal with people and then, but they don't have the people to, you know, to come up there. So it's this terrible cycle that we're running through right now. But as we go down this county, you know, the state wants one thing with left hand and then the right hand is saying, "No, you can't have that." Which is, I'm talking CAL FIRE. CAL FIRE has been very, you know, problematic to get anything running because as you go down the county from Kirkwood on down, it's still high-fire threat. And then a very, you know, it's very high-fire threat, high-fire threat. And now even Ione is now getting into a fire-threat area, you know. So, you know, insurance, all these items are, you know, very incredible. You know, I have numerous constituents who own their homes. They have no fire insurance on their home because they just flat-out can't afford the insurance.
It's become incredibly expensive.
And so as you, as you look at this, you know, none of that is in this plan.
That is, we did not, that's true. We, so we did talk about constraints with steep slopes and high-fire hazard areas for new development and definitely didn't attempt to cite higher-density housing there. We did not go into the concerns with the rising fire insurance requirements, defensible space requirements. And a lot of that affects somebody's ability to continue to reside in their home. And we didn't, we didn't go into that. And we did reference, so, in the housing rehabilitation program, providing assistance with defensible space and fire hardening so that you can assist the existing property owners. If there's grant funds can be found to do that, just to really further assist those residents because it is hard to be in those areas.
Okay, any more questions?
So this went to the state then for review and they had some suggestions or edits they wanted to see. So if we did all that, is our, is our housing element going to be compliant at this point?
So they have another sixty-day review period. And we've seen a lot of, just, there's been a full range of review. It used to be in previous cycles, we would review things with the state. We would make revisions to meet their requirements and your housing element would be found in compliance and would be certified. This time around, the state has really looked at things more deeply. So on their second review, they may want to see more revisions. And so included in your resolution, it authorizes staff-level modifications when they're minor. So when you're not increasing the amount of housing in the county, when you're not having, you know, a huge general fund commitment. So it allows for us to go through and work with your staff and work with the state to resolve those without coming back to you. If there are big changes that the state asks for, of course, those would come back to you. We've seen some jurisdictions get certified on their first pass. We've seen some that are like on their ninth and are still just trying to make revisions. I will say that the county is seeking no place like home funds and those are contingent on state certification. And the state often will be very willing to work with jurisdictions to achieve certification when they know you're actively working to receive funds to assist housing needs in the county. And so that's definitely when we send this back, we're going to let them know that you're, would really like to be able to use your no-place-like-home funding that you've already received and draw from that. And so can we please figure out a way to get the housing element certified? And the state's been helpful when they know that you're really working towards certification and you're truly going after funding to assist housing.
Okay, so we're not certified yet?
No guarantee, but I'm optimistic.
I did have one more item, page fifteen.
Is that in the housing plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Axe and I are both on the ATCA board. And I don't think it's come through the board that we're going to be assisting this, the housing plan, is it? Has it?
Is it specifically?
Housing Working Group to coordinate with ATCA in the 2023, 2024 to determine if ATCA can offer fair housing services to all county residents. If ATCA cannot be offer fair housing services, the housing group to contact Fair Housing Advocate.
Depends on what fair housing services are. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Fair housing services typically is when people have a fair housing complaint, having a resource that they can go to to call and to either help them file a complaint or help them resolve the complaint. So some jurisdictions point them to the state that used to be the Department of Fair Employment and Housing and they've changed their name as maybe it's the California Civil Rights Department. But anyway, you can direct them there, you can direct them to head. Some jurisdictions have more than that, but as long as you're providing some level of assistance, you don't have to mediate the complaints, you know, you don't have to serve in that capacity. But as long as you're providing assistance to help people resolve complaints and then that you're following up with them, were they able to file their complaint? Did they receive any resolution? So it's just.
I don't know if they've actually done that in the past. I'm not aware of that. I know that they do provide some level of assistance to keep people in their house, you know, with the first-last-month rents, paying utilities, things like that. They have various state programs that they implement, that they receive funding to actually do because it's a community action agency.
Right.
I don't know if this falls into their purview or not, but I guess, have they been contacted in this regard?
So they, we did include them in our outreach. I don't think that they commented on anything, but they were invited to participate. And they may have filled out a survey early on. But what will happen is once this is adopted and that bullet item is implemented, the working group will reach out to ATCA and say, "Okay, you know, here's what we're doing and can you provide these services?" And figure out if they can. And if they can't, then look for some other opportunities. And if ATCA's interested in doing that, there's also just a straightforward way of logging any complaints and then having just a, kind of a checklist that whoever takes that call goes through in terms of knowing who to refer the complaint to. And so just who do you refer it to and then how do you follow up? And so they don't have to be an expert on fair housing law as long as the folks can, you know, understand that there's just a process to assisting these people.
Right. There's also a person in the county, there's a housing person.
We have a housing coordinator.
Coordinator.
In social services.
And what does that function do?
That could probably be extended over to that function.
So it could be a combination of those two?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Chuck, this question's to you. Housing Working Group, is that something that's going to be under planning? Are you?
We'd be planning staffs from the county and the cities.
So you guys will be coordinating that?
Right.
Okay.
No additional staff.
Do we have an idea what that group would consist of?
Members from the planning staffs of the county and the five cities.
Okay.
Or designee.
Any other board questions? Hey, out to the public?
Hello, my name is Chelsea King and I'm a program coordinator for the California Health Collaborative. My program, DAN, Small Town Allies Against Nicotine Dependency, has been working with communities across the Gold Country region of California, including Amador County, to address the negative impacts generated by the tobacco industry. And I'm just here today to thank you all for taking a step towards smoke-free, multi-unit housing for your residents within Amador County. The smoke-free language that has been included within the housing element is an important achievement for your community in protecting the health of all your residents that live in multi-unit housing. Smoke-free, multi-unit housing protects residents from exposure to secondhand smoke, which can cause lung cancer, respiratory infections, asthma, and many other health issues. I'm sure many of you have experienced being exposed to secondhand smoke. I know I have. Throughout my childhood, both my brother and I were exposed to secondhand smoke, which resulted in him developing asthma. Secondhand smoke is incredibly dangerous. And taking this step towards protecting your community from its effects is incredibly important. Smoke-free housing also improves air quality, diminishes fire risk, and reduces the rates of smoking in youth and young adults. We hope that you continue to move forward and promote the development of more smoke-free, multi-unit housing within the county. We also hope that you may consider the adoption of a smoke-free ordinance for all multi-unit housing someday in the near future. It's important to remember that the current smoking rate for adults in Amador County is around fourteen percent, relatively low. And recent research has shown that over eighty-four percent of Californians support smoke-free ordinances for multi-unit housing. These ordinances have been shown to reduce smoking rates and improve overall health for all residents who live in multi-unit housing. So with this in mind, we hope that you will continue to move forward towards smoke-free, multi-unit housing for all in the county. Thank you again for taking this step and protecting the health of your residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katie. I'm with Chelsea with the California Health Collaborative. We're a nonprofit with different programs across the state. We seek to improve health in rural and underserved communities. During the public workshops for this cycle of the housing element, we provided comment and submitted a packet of materials for you and the planning staff on the matter of smoking in multifamily apartments. We noted that there had been several comments from community members in both twenty fifteen, in the twenty fifteen update and in this current update. Many residents talked about how their homes smelled like smoke even though they don't themselves smoke and that the exposure to secondhand smoke makes it difficult for them to live there, especially when it comes to managing asthma and keeping children safe. So we were very pleased that in this updated draft, you included goals, policies, and action plans to address this issue. And so we're just here today to give you our sincerest thanks. We also want to assure you that our organization, the California Health Collaborative, as well as the county. as well as the county health department, um, are both here to assist the county with these efforts of promoting smoke-free multi-unit housing. And that, speaking of the funding conversation, there is funding for this through tobacco taxes. The county public health department does receive, um, tobacco tax funding to help with efforts like these. We have a grant, and there's another organization that's working in this county that also has a grant on this. And so we just wanted to come and let you know that we're here to help support with these efforts. Um, the county has education materials, presentations, they also have resources and materials for free quit services that are available for Amador County residents. Um, we noted in our previous comments that several other rural counties have also addressed this issue in their housing elements, including Calusa County, Kualami County, Eldorado County, as well as the cities of, um, Williams and Arvin. Um, I do wanna note that the county public health department has already been working on this issue with residents for many, many years, um, and that they do sometimes run into challenges with managers and owners of these complexes, um, and getting them to address this issue when residents come with complaints about the smoke going into their units. Um, and so oftentimes, more often than not, unfortunately, nothing is done for the residents where the smoke is coming into their units and they often don't have the money to move. So we would like you to at least consider, um, the adoption of an ordinance for smoke-free multifamily housing. Ninety-nine other jurisdictions in the state have already adopted at least some restrictions on smoking in multifamily housing, including Firebow, Fresno, and Crescent City. And again, our team, um, the county public health department, we are here to support you, to gather any of the information that you might need to make such a determination. So, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, members of the board supervisors, Craig Baracco, Executive Director of the Federal Conservancy, uh, reintroducing myself for those of you who might have known me from a job ago. Uh, Conservancy has long advocated, uh, for workforce housing in Amador County. Um, we, uh, are frontline workers dealing with the homelessness crisis in Amador County as our work with the Watershed Protection Alliance. We are out there cleaning up homeless encampments. And I just had a few remarks, um, as you prepare to, uh, adopt the new housing element. One item is that we've had a, uh, want to renew our longstanding call for the county to adopt an affordable housing ordinance. Uh, City of Jackson has one, jurisdictions throughout, uh, State of California have affordable, it's often called an inclusionary housing ordinance or affordable housing ordinance. Basically, projects of a certain size, usually about ten units are up, either multi-family or single-family homes, a certain portion are set aside for affordable, to meet the affordable housing needs of the community, either through deed restriction or, uh, rent controls, depending on the type of unit, whether it's sold or rented. Um, it's a way to guarantee that housing needs are met, uh, not ju, uh, when development occurs, not just, uh, kind of zoning and hoping for the best, uh, in terms of meeting your needs. Just on a, a general note, I'd like to say, and Mr. Forrester asked this question, what happens if the housing needs aren't met, if the goals of the plan aren't fulfilled? And we're seeing that, actually, where it's, there are consequences in rising rents, um, of houses, of ever-increasing housing prices, making, uh, it unaffordable for people to buy starter homes, to get, to enter the housing market, uh, for young families to buy their first house. It's, uh, there are fairly, there are dire consequences, a, a never-aging population. Amador County has a good economic base. We have many job centers, we have tourism, casinos, the wine industry, all those industries require workers and those workers need housing. If they're not housed, the, there are bad consequences. It becomes unaffordable. Uh, does, uh, people have to commute from far away, people have to live in areas of high fire danger. There are real consequences, policy-wise, to your constituents if their housing needs are not met, uh, besides whatever mean things the county, the state might say about us. The real consequence is to our citizens. Just a couple of other notes, um, uh, we, in our letter we submitted, we agree with, uh, Supervisor Brown, Chairman Brown, about the, um, issues with fire danger and ever-increasing insurance rates. Um, unfortunately, it might be something that the state's gonna have to adopt in the, you know, the next cycle, but it is a real constraint on affordable, on housing affordability, the, uh, you know, pay, having to pay five thousand, ten thousand and up for, um, for home insurance is, makes, will move homes from, uh, affordable to not affordable. And it's something that the state's gonna have to deal with going forward. For the more libertarian-minded members of the board, I would just offer that this plan, uh, pol, the policies being implemented, um, are lifting the heavy hand of government, um, from landowners. It's legalizing a whole variety of housing uses that were previously illegal, um, transitional housing, single-family or single occupancy hotels, um, various other, um, sort of non-traditional housing. These are the kind of things that we're gonna need to build in order to address issues like, uh, homelessness. The, you know, the Gold Country tradition was boarding houses, what's now called single, single occupancy hotels. Certainly got a bad reputation and has been made illegal over the years. We're, uh, now state, by state mandate, that's being brought back. I think the county should embrace that. Whatever issues there are with such housing, it's a darn sight better than a, a homeless encampment. Uh, my organization has seen that up close, uh, in our cleanup efforts. Just a final note, um, I wanted to respond to, uh, Mr. Forrester's comments about, uh, impacts on, uh, housing prices and neighborhoods and, and such. I think, what's at issue is, um, there's no incentive right now in Amador County because rental units are so scarce, because housing is so impacted. There's no incentive for landlords to put the maintenance in to their rental units that they need, that they should do. Right, you can tell which houses are rental units because they're not maintained the same way the owned houses are. And landlords can get away with that because the market is so tight, that there are so few rentals out there, there are so few, there hasn't been any new apartments built. If we put two hundred and forty new units into Ione or built the Wicklow Way specific plan with, it's called for high-density residential housing, suddenly, um, one, rent wouldn't go up as much, landlords wouldn't be able to set their own price, and they'd have to compete with that new, those new rental units, those new opportunities for people, for our working people to rent. And so they would have to fix the windows, paint the house, put in a good lawn, right? I've seen houses in, you know, in old town Ione that have, so, I have dirt driveways, right? They had non-maintained gravel driveways and, uh, little, little four flex. And the, and the way the landlord can get away with that is because there's not enough competition for their business, that they're guaranteed to be able to rent out anything no matter how much they neglect the property. And this is a free-market way to beautify our communities, to make our housing stock better, and that is to allow, uh, low and medium, moderate income housing to be built, to allow multifamily, allow other alternative forms like duplexes, triplexes, apartments above commercial. It's all, um, it all serves a greater purpose and, uh, as you move forward and, uh, adopting this plan, I hope you keep an open mind and, uh, receive those applications when they come in, um, and give them the consideration that they deserve. I'm happy to answer any questions.
My question is, is your group has impeded a lot of infrastructure, you know, from AWA, you know, from Plymouth, um, the Plymouth Pipeline, so you have impeded housing being developed in there. Are you, is your group gonna continue that or, um, stop doing that type of thing to make housing affordable?
I mean, I, I would say in issues like how big the pipeline, the water pipeline that serves Plymouth should be, um, that's a, it's a policy debate that, um, we had at the time and, um, it was our position and we maintained that, uh, what was, what was originally proposed was, um, largely out of scale with the future development needs of Plymouth.
Do we, you know, that, uh, that kept, you know, things from happening, you know, and that's, you know, without, you know, as we're going into infrastructure problems right now, being able to handle other infrastructure from Ione to, you know, my district was lucky enough to have the Buckhorn Treatment Plant put into it, but even at that time, the Buckhorn Treatment Plant, there was people upset about the gravity supply line being so big at that time. It hasn't created any more housing in my district, so these, but that infrastructure allows more things to happen into the future. And so that's part of my, you know, per se problem with your group is, is that you've impeded a lot of housing development that, because the, the water was not available.
I mean, uh, to take up the Plymouth example some more.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, development is happening in, in Plymouth.
It is.
Uh, Zenfidel Ranch is going in phases, there are proposal, there's the, now the Grealish Ranch proposal. Um, as I understand it, talking to city officials in Plymouth, the actual, um, uh, infrastructure issue right now is, uh, water storage in Plymouth, not the size of the pipeline. So I would.
Well, part of it is the plant up and off a ridge road can't handle a whole bunch more.
And that, and that affects the entire.
But it's, it's still the pipeline size or anything else, you know, eventually, you know, the economy of scale, you know, the lawsuits that happen did impede, you know, development i- in an economical way, which that cost will be pushed down to future buyers. You know, the, the lawsuits and anything else will be done. So it, it's, I, I'm not trying to accuse you of anything, I'm just, there's just bumps in the road and we've all become bumps in the road in, in trying to help, you know, anybody with low cost.
Right. And, and I understand, and it's, um, an issue that would affect, um, you know, McMansions just as much as it would affect a, uh, your, um, the densest of apartment complexes.
Correct.
So, um, and we do acknowledge in our letter the, the limitations, particularly with water and, and fire, and we, um, do support efforts to address those, particularly, um, plant upgrades at Tanner and the like that, um, will allow, uh, Amador Water Agency to provide the service that it, uh, is mandated to do. It's not our intention to stifle growth entirely or to, um, make it cost prohibitive.
On some of the points you brought up, since you named me specifically, um, I'd already stated, I want everyone to have a home to live in that's comfortable. So my point on the compliance was on looking at it from the county side, are we gonna be penalized?
Sure.
If something doesn't happen, even if we follow all the steps and go and jump through all the hoops and help the development community. So don't take anything I said there out of context.
Oh, no, and I didn't mean to, I would, I would just remind the board that the consequences, besides whatever the state might have in store for local jurisdictions in, in California, there are real consequences to the residents of Amador County if we don't meet housing.
And, and even though Ione is growing, um, I think the capacity of Ione to bring in two hundred and forty units of section eight housing, for one community to do that is too much of a load for one community. Let's take a hundred and twenty of those units and put them in Sutter Creek. So let's spread the load so that each community can absorb the, the new type of housing that's come in, the section eight housing that's in.
Sutter Creek is building.
The section eight housing that's in Ione already, it has absorbed into the community, there are good people living there and they become, uh, good residents in the community. But to do two hundred and forty, you're probably gonna bring in a bunch of residents from outside the community that may not have a, a great effect on a little community like Ione.
Well, that's what Ione wants to do. They wanna become the big city in the, in the county and they've, they've, they've made no, uh, they haven't tried to hide that at all, so, you know.
Well, let's help Sutter Creek grow.
Sutter Creek is fine, Sutter Creek's actually bu, gonna build some, okay?
I will, I. Thank co-property.
Yes, and I, uh, fully, fully intend to also do, do this in front of, um, all the city councils, um, I, we're not letting them off the hook in terms of their.
We understand, it, for the countywide, though, most of our things are one development, you know, one person comes in, wants to develop their piece of property, you know, that we don't have a huge amount of developers in the county zone part of it. So that's, and that's kind of where we're, you know, where we're focusing on and, and that's, you know, like I said, my development, I think Gala Manor was developed in the nineties, you know, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, I'll probably get emails on that one, but, um, you know, the development in the county side is, is hard, you know, it is truly hard and, but I'm, I'm hopeful for the Wicklow Way project. I'm a little unnerved by, you know, the timeline that we've been given on it, but we will go on that as we go. Supervisor Cruz, do you have anything?
Well, Craig, I was just glad to hear you say you didn't wanna stifle growth entirely.
Or at all, frankly, I mean, there are.
Even better.
We, you know, uh, our position is clear that we want, uh, that the Federal Conservancy, um, believes that growth is a, a necessary component of a thriving community and should be directed in shorthand towards areas where growth has already occurred. That does preclude much of the county's jurisdiction, but it doesn't preclude all of it. I mean, you still have Martell, there are under, there are unincorporated small towns like Drytown, uh, and the like, uh, Comanche, um, so, um, it's, uh, it is not entirely off, off you guys to, to think about housing and where it can be provided. The good news is, the scale of this is not actually that big, right? Uh, you know, a fifty-unit hous, uh, fifty-unit subdivision or a fifty-unit, uh, housing complex can make a huge impact on the housing market, on your allocated numbers. It doesn't actually take that much to make an impact, given, you know, the base population and, and our needs, so.
Resonetto?
Well, it just seems like the more government does, the bigger the problem gets, I can't figure that out.
Okay, thank you, appreciate you coming forward, getting chastised and everything.
Your turn. Please.
My name's Renee Mickelson, by the way, and I just wanted to ask a few questions. Is the, the housing, um, element gonna be resubmitted to HCD for approval, for them to take another look at it?
It does go back to the state of California, I don't know, they.
Does go back.
I'm bringing our planner up.
Oh.
Following board approval, it does go back to HCD, they have a sixty day period to certify it or give us suggestions that would help it become certified.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I just wanted to clarify, the state requires only that land be zoned, not that those homes be built.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure. And I also was wondering if the Amador Fire Safe Council is mentioned anywhere in the housing element or firewise communities, um, I was.
Well, that, that goes along with the fire insurance and all the rest of that, that's not part of the, part of the equation.
Okay, okay, I was just curious. And also, one more thing, I wanted to thank all of you for serving, I know that you've done this regularly, some of you for a long time, and I stood before this board off and on throughout. And I stood before this board off and on throughout the years and I appreciate your service. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else from the public? Anybody on Zoom? I have a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Back to the board for discussion.
I'll make a motion then to accept staff's recommendations to find the housing element as exempt from SEQA and adopt a resolution repealing the fifth cycle housing element in its entirety and adopting the sixth cycle housing element update. Isn't that a movie? The sixth element?
Does that include we had a few adjustments?
Specifically?
Yeah, like I, I made a request for the general fund not to be just general fund. Sure.
If it's your direction, those are small tech changes. We can make that throughout the housing plan. Sure.
All right. Okay. That's what I'm asking for.
You know, I could vote no on this like my planning commissioner, but I, I, I see his reasoning, but I think this, I'll second the motion because it's something we need to do. It'll just hurt us in a lot of other different ways if we don't have this plan in place.
You know, under discussion, I'd say I agree with you, Richard. I think a few of us thought of vote no just on principle. I know we, we got to do it.
Well, I could vote no on principle if you want to second it.
Then I, I'll give, I'll give it a second. As long as you vote no, well, I'd like to have two no's. It'd be nice, just.
Well, I'm not going to do that. I-
Call for the vote.
I'd be happy to second it with no.
I'll keep my second in place. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay. So four, one.
Otherwise, how the state ever know you get that, you're getting kind of tired of this stuff. Everybody makes five, zero.
They're not going to count about your no vote.
Well, you're probably right on that, but.
Okay. We need to suspend the board supervisor meeting and go to the Board of Equalization, but does anybody need to take a break?
No.
Okay. We already did the pledge of allegiance. Let's do approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Stipulations. Oh, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, five, zero. Stipulations, one A. Stipulation for reduction of assessment.
We vote both at the same time.
You call them both so you can take action on both.
Okay, we're calling both one A and one B.
I'll move to approve both stipulations.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five, zero. And that's now adjourned. For the Board of Equalization.
I was the quickest BOE meeting I've ever had.
I thought so too. That was kind of surprising. Okay. We will now come back open with the board supervisors. Excuse me as I get the right page.
Five D.
Five D. Administrative discussion of possible action relative to the Amador County abandoned vehicle abatement fee. Just sitting there.
Good afternoon now?
Yes, it is.
Good afternoon, Board. Michelle Geller with Code Enforcement. As you know, last year, Measure J, J did not pass with a two-thirds vote. And we ended up getting 10,116 yeses and 7,911 no's. And so we were 1,782 votes short to have it pass to continue our program. The public obviously has been paying this fee for the last 11 years. So again, we're just asking to keep it at the dollar, even though things have increased. So, and again, all funds from the state are required to be, are required to be spent, otherwise we lose the program. So if it doesn't pass again, we'd have to decide not to either enforce abandoned and opable vehicles or obviously find some sort of funding for it. Currently, we have maybe about an average of about two and a half years worth of funding for it to continue. So in short, we do have our five cities are in support of it. Sutter Creek, Amador City, Plymouth, Ione, and Jackson. They've all done new resolutions to place the AVA program back on the, back on the next election.
What's going to change this time? Everybody supported it last time and it failed too.
I think, well, I think we just need to promote it more. I do know in seeing conversations about it, people felt like, well, what are they going to do with this money? And that's one of the things I would like to probably see on the ballot info is that, again, any funding that we receive for this program, we're required to spend every cent. Otherwise, they will take it away from us. So I think if the public knew that we're not, you know, keeping or we're using it for other things, it's, we have to spend every cent for it.
Well, you can educate and that means either you or members of this board going to radio, running editorials in the newspaper. It's all educational. We don't have to spend any money on it.
Correct. I've also, with the AVA Board, have asked them to go back to their cities and also promote, promote it because it's important that they know that, you know, it's important we have this program. It's done a lot of good. We've removed 4,742 vehicles during the 11 years. So it is a great program to help out when people do abandon or if there's inopable vehicles.
Yeah, I think maybe a little bit of outreach might help. Just if people, like what you're saying, write, write a, maybe newspaper, something along that line would probably help.
Yeah, maybe just an article for the newspaper, short article explaining what it's for. Is this require a two-thirds vote for-
Yes.
Passing? Okay. So what was our percentage then? It was 50-something?
Yeah, we got-
That's where you do math on the fly.
Right?
Okay. All right. So never mind.
Yeah, we, we ended up, yeah, there was-
Didn't come to 67%, huh?
Yeah, it, it was very close. Like I said, we were 1,782 votes short of it.
Okay.
Out of the 18,000 votes for it.
Right. Yeah, I, you know, I could speak firsthand experience. Somebody decided to bring their old junk cars up to the road I live on and just leave them, leave them there, which is, seems like a lot of trouble to go to. So, yeah.
If you want a couple free boats on Missouri Flat Road, there's two of them on trailers.
Yeah. How are the trailers?
You know, I, I, that thought did occur to me. It's pretty nice looking trailer.
Now you're getting all brave. You, you'll do all trailers, I think.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. Anybody from the public? Anybody from Zoom?
Chairman, Chairman Brown?
Yes.
I, just looking over the resolution that's in the packet. It's, I think it's the resolution from last time?
Yeah.
And so it, I think there's just some wherethas that need to be updated a little bit because that prior one is already expired.
Yeah.
And it, this says, if we don't, if we don't reapprove, if we don't reauthorize it, it will expire. It already has expired. So I, you're just okay with me cleaning this up and then submitting it to the chairman for signature? The, and, and then I don't know if the board, if you look at section two, the, the measure, the language of the measure itself, that's the way you wanted to read. I was just thinking, I, I don't know if, that it's really necessary for that or any successor statutes there to really is necessary. And I don't know if you think it reads better without that in there.
I'd clean it up and make it as simple as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Hey, do we have a motion?
I would move to have county council clean up this resolution or guess, resolution and bring it back to the board for approval.
Do, do, we're running up against the deadline. So if you're okay with-
We'll go ahead and approve it then, subject to county council making the directed changes.
Second. Thank you.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'll make sure I get it publicized out there.
All right. Thank you.
Here's your code enforcement, but vote for AVA. Okay, five E. General Services Administration. Summary progress report.
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Hopkins, General Services Director. So it's, it's been some time since I gave you guys a projects report. Hopefully you guys have, I was, spare you some time here and go through this really quickly. But notable is that the one-time monies that were allocated back in 2017 have now been all but exhausted and everything is in what we call our capital improvement fund. So there are two jobs that remain unfunded out of that project list. And that was just simply because the board redirected funds to the library project to take advantage of that 35% that was added to it through USDA, through a grant. I don't know if there's anything in the report that you actually want to talk about specifically, but most of the projects that you can see there that we've done have not exceeded our contingencies or we've returned money at, at times. But that's about to change, I think, with a couple of projects that we're going to talk about specifically regarding the District Attorney's Building and a project that they, they would like to see us move forward with. But before we get to that, are there any questions on any of the projects that I've listed here?
There, there were a couple projects that were very low cost and you don't, you don't think you can even get those done. I think it was like the, the General Services building carpet. It seems like they were only like $10,000, some, somewhere around there.
Yeah. So that's, that's just an effective, the available resources to, to get that stuff done. So right now I could use probably six additional guys, which we're not going to get. So we're prioritizing those projects as needs come up. Currently, we've had a couple mold projects, asbestos abatement projects that have affected, you know, that influence existing projects that we've got going on currently right now. And hopefully by the end of the year, staff is going to get really busy in 2024 with the jail project. So I'm hoping the district gives us-
I just, one more, John, on the, the IT leak.
Yes, sir.
Seemed like it wasn't a lot of money, but it's, it's more of a search project, isn't it, to find where the leak is?
Well, I think we've come to the conclusion that, and I've just been reluctant to do it, but we're going to end up having to tear that thin brick off to find that leak.
And what's that going to cost? Because I, I hate not spending 20,000 where we might get another, another major issue like we got in the past where we had flooding that really cost a lot of money.
And again, prioritizing. So while we deal with a leak once or twice a year out of that department, we've got other projects that have a heavier priority. The one that's coming up right now is the District Attorney's Exterior. So I'll move into that right now. When we first started getting estimates for that, originally that project was just to scrape the paint and repaint the building. That's what that $174,000 represents. Today we're, through investigations and through plans and, and hiring weather being associates for the, the plans inspector for that building, which Mark is getting ready to put out to bid at the end of the year, we need to talk about that because I had guesstimated that that was going to be about 400,000 or more. But Mr. Alvaria informed me here about it two hours ago. We had a contractor, a DIR, registered public work contractor come out and take a look at that building. And he's looking at, at cost of, of just north of a mil to get this done. So there are some significant structural issues there at that building. I need to talk with the CAO about how we're going to fund that. The other thing that I was kicking around in my head is to have Karen seek out a grant for that because that is a historic building. It is on the historic register and that's how that building was originally renovated anyway, was through a grant in the nineties. So we'll look for that, but I'm not quite sure yet if I should just let it out to bid to see what bids come back as, or if I need to hold off a, a little bit and, and see where we're going to be able to afford that kind of money for that building. It is in bad shape, though.
That takes care of the other issue, though, because historic buildings cannot have cameras on them. I'm just kidding. I don't know.
No.
It went from 400, you're thinking 400,000 to probably a million?
Right.
North of a mil.
North of a mil. So, yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't good news. But that, that project has evolved over time to where the, the original scope is not anywhere close to what it was originally. So the other notable thing on here, and the District Attorney's here been waiting patiently like I have been, but they, they have requested to add a project to sort of approve projects. And that's a camera project, involves nine cameras around the District Attorney's Building for security. The DA and Chief District Attorney are here to talk about that, but I have no idea where that funding would come from. The estimate that we got from that, from another reliable contractor is about $113,000 for that particular project. So we need to talk about what you want to do with that and if you want to fund it, make it a project or not. But you may also want to hear from the DA why they're wanting to propose that.
Thank you, John and members of the board. You know, we're, it looks like we're in this building for the long haul. There was some talk at some point that maybe the District Attorney's Office and Sheriff's Office would move by the HHS building, maybe by the property that the county had purchased by the Walmart. I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. So we're in this building and we are a, and it is a county asset. And it's, we're a law enforcement building. We have sensitive information. We have an evidence locker. We have evidence from a pending death penalty case that's just awaiting from the Court of Appeal to get back to us as to whether or not they're going to grant a rehearing or send it back. And we have all those documents that are downstairs, boxes and boxes. We have all of our prior murder cases. We have any prior life commitment. All those cases are in storage in our office. We have records in our case management system, but they could be damaged or they could be lost in the event of an arson or, or a breach. For instance, when I, earlier in my career, 1994, there was arson at the Madera County District Attorney's Office, burned everything down and everything that was in their case management system was lost. They had to get discovery from the Public Defender's Office because they had lost everything. Orange County DA's office recently had a breach and their, they got hacked and their information was lost. So even then it can happen, even with a case management system. And our office has been breached before.
Would cameras catch that hack then?
They, they were hacked in, Orange County DA's office, into the case management system.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I'd be in funny talk. I was wondering if the cameras would catch the hacker result.
Yeah. I just read about it. I don't know any more facts about it other than it brought their, it brought their, them to their knees because they're very dependent upon it, as are we. And our office has been breached before. In 1999, we had somebody come in through the roof of the building and they stole sensitive documents on a pending investigation that we were conducting. And more than at any time in my career, there are bad actors, many with severe mental illness who have targeted law enforcement and posed a very real, real, very real risk to our officers and, and staff, all of the law enforcement agencies, sheriff's office, the police departments, and our agency as well. Right now, if I was to give you a tour of our office, you would see four to five posters that have a photograph of people who have made threats or demonstrated behavior that is threatening to law enforcement. We're not trying to exaggerate it. You read the facts of what they've done. One of them's in custody right now. And very bizarre behavior directed at the sheriff's office with a prior convict- and with a prior conviction of arson. So, nothing to fool around with. Although we have an office alarm system, we have no video surveillance system. We had one, um, makeshift years ago and it, 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 it no longer works. We've encumbered ten thousand eight hundred for that project, that, that's not enough. And what do we need it for? Well, we needed to surveil, uh, critical and vulnerable areas such as the lobby and all doors during work hours. Uh, and, and then that would give an opportunity for the investigative staff to respond to threats, to protect staff or to prevent crime. We also needed to surveil the same areas after hours to identify public safety situations and alert law enforcement agencies, probably the sheriff's office, since given their proximity, to respond to the threat and perhaps prevent crime or hold criminal actors, uh, responsible. We also needed to identi-, uh, identify suspects and aid in their apprehension. The realistic threats, uh, that, um, uh, are, are, are possible that have happened in, in other, uh, law enforcement offices, arson, vandalism, theft, uh, explosive devices and acts of violence. Uh, the agenda packet addresses other areas of vulnerability. I really don't publicly want to talk about where our office is vulnerable, uh, on the record. Um, but privately, I'd be, be happy to, to, to share it, but you, you know, it's in the agenda packet. Um, but suffice it to say, um, that it's very, very, very concerning. Uh, so that's why we're here. Uh, it looks like we're here for the long haul and, um, uh, we would, we're advocating or a possible funding source for this would be the ARPA funds.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Supervisor.
John, could we, uh, add these cameras if we were applying for a grant? Kind of merge the exterior and, and the surveillance into the same, get it in a grant, get a grant funded?
Uh, that's, we can look at that, that's possible, I know that.
Is that too much of a reach? I'm just saying.
No, I, I think, um, if I recall correctly, uh, when, when my bride was the risk manager, she actually worked with the sheriff's department through some risk funds or, or risk program for body cameras. I believe at the time, though, that they didn't like the body cameras that, that were offered through that. So, so even risk, I, I'll look at every source I can to, to find funding. Uh, it, it's just, uh, haven't been, don't even know if you guys want to make this a project or not. So, first thing is, if you want to make it a project, we'll put it on the list. If you want us to go find funding for it somewhere or have staff start to research that, Todd mentioned, uh, one source, uh, that's up to the board, you know, at, at, at some point. But I, I haven't had time to research any other sources of funding.
Well, you said you were going to look at possible grants for the historic building.
Right. Well, and that's, that's come about simply because of the, of the wonderful news Mr. Alvaria gave me.
I'm just adding one more thing to it for you.
Yeah, just making a complete package.
Well, you know, I, I think, um, look at an extensive list we have, like for instance, we've got, you know, IT room that's had water damage.
Yep.
That's not fixed yet.
Nope.
Um, you know, I mean, that's probably not an intruder per se, but that's intrusion. Uh, I think that's probably more important in the ratings category, in my opinion, as far as what gets done. And that, that needs, there's some other items that need to be done that haven't been done. So, um, I, I don't see doing it. I mean, there's no cameras around this building. And there's all kinds of records in here that, you know, along the same line. I think it's a matter of priorities and I, I don't see that being hu-, you know, above, above the other ones. So, unless you find, you can find some grant funding or something like that, then you still actually, you got your maintenance going down the road with that. But, um, I'd consider if you had like a grant funding or something along that line.
Yeah, I, I, I don't mind it being on the list, but we do have to find a way to fund it. And that, you know, there's probably other, um, projects that we have to probably do first, but probably should be on the list.
Cause yeah, we get threats here, too. I mean, there's been people come in, I mean, sometimes misguided whatever they're mad about. Um, or children being taken away from them and we've had pictures posted up there, you know, at the county offices, too. I mean, so it's, it happens. Or somebody's mad about this or mad about that. Um, not a good situation, but that's part of doing business.
You digitize most of your records? These case records that you've got boxes?
In our case management system, most of them are. I, um, there's a lot of them that are down.
Not that that's the best thing, but you got a way to retrieve.
There's a lot of them downstairs, I don't believe have been scanned. I don't think any of that, uh, death penalty stuff has been scanned.
Just a question.
There's about twenty some odd boxes of that.
Hey, how, how long is it going to take, John, to go through the grant process? Month to see if there's anything out there, a couple of weeks?
Uh, specifically for cameras or for the historic?
For the.
Uh, we, Karen can start searching that. You know, grants are, uh, just because you look at it one way, you got to keep looking at it. We would keep looking at it until, it would seem to me that when it comes to a building like that being on the historic register, that there would be some funding out there for that. We just haven't looked at that and it didn't even dawn on me until, uh, this morning to even go that route. Uh, because I didn't expect, uh, the cost at, at, at that point in time. Mark Alvaria, facilities and project manager. Um, we do have some time. Um, I'm going to be ready to put this on the street by the end of the year, that's my goal. But, you know, realistically, we're not going to be able to start work until April, you know? It, because of the weather, because it's an outside, you know, we're doing the painting and all the exterior work. So, we do, we do have a little bit of time to, to, for John and, uh, if he puts Karen on it to find funding.
Todd, do you feel that's workable if we go through the grant process? And then if, if nothing shows up, then we revisit it?
I don't care where the money comes from. I mean, I don't. I, I just know it's a need and, and, um, as person in charge of that office right now, I'm, I'm bringing it to the board's attention. So, how, where we can come up with it, if it's not ARPA, if it's a, if it's a grant, um, that, that's available. Uh, it would seem to me that, that given the unique use of this building, even though it's an historic structure, that perhaps some grant money might be available for that. Um, wherever that money can come from, I, I, I really don't care. Uh, uh, I, I do think it's, uh, something that is, uh, uh, necessary and, and it does look like we're here for, in that building for a while.
Yep, let's, uh, well, let's try the grant process first and if that doesn't materialize, then maybe we can revisit this and, uh, look at a different angle that works with you. I mean, we're talking about potentially four or five months. Um, but we should know within that period easily whether we're going to attain some grant funds.
Yeah.
Sure. So, with the, we can do that, we'll add it to the list. Um, I do want to note for the board, uh, I made a comment in my report because I went back and looked at some information regarding, uh, what I would call professionals, engineer or architectural estimates that we receive. Typically, we have found that, um, over time, I, I hate to, I use the word unreliable, but they are not as reliable as I would like them to be. And I'm, I, I went back and looked at some things over the last, uh, five and even ten years. And when I look at the projects listed here, the jail yard separation and ADA project, I look at the district attorney and pioneer vets hall generator projects, the SO and, and, uh, the sheriff's office and, and jail classes, the jail roof project and then the solar project. All of those projects, we actually went out and targeted contractors for that costing. And each and every time, we're either at, or we're, we're not exceeding our contingencies or we're, we're returning money or we're, we're below budget. So, um, I'm not sure where I'm really going with this, but I don't have a high level of confidence with, with professionals in providing estimates. I think the guys on the street, the guys with the, the boots on the ground are, are a better avenue for getting real cost. Uh, so just want to make that note to the board because it doesn't matter if you're doing a road project or a building project. Um, I do thank staff, publicly want to thank them. I know that they've spent lots of hours supporting other projects, other projects that aren't even listed on here. Uh, the board is aware of the fact that the SO just leased a building down the street. Well, it still took, uh, two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-four hours of IT staff time to support that project. Uh, things like that, that go on on a regular basis. So, uh, whether it's Mark and, and, and crew or IT supporting these projects that crop up, uh, I appreciate their time. Uh, other than that, if, if you'd like, I can certainly in a, another year, bring you back another report so you see it.
Please do.
In the meantime, I will look for funding for these projects in every hole that I can find.
And so, we, I think the board is looking for direction to put the cameras on the, um.
If you want to put it.
Funded at this time.
Right, if you want to make it a formal project, it, it's good for me to know.
Okay, I don't know if I want to make it a formal project. Run across something, fine, but not, I mean, you got a lot of projects on here already.
Well, there's a lot that you got, that aren't on here, too, uh, that, that just come up. Uh, just come up.
I, I don't.
That will take priority, actually, I should let you know.
Leaving it as a formal project is not funded? As long as we're looking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem putting it on the list as a formal project, but we, we need to find the funding for it.
Right.
Subject to that.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Sean.
All right. Uh, thank you, Todd.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Be back here at, um, five F. Waste manager resolution of the board supervisors of the County of Amador, authorizing the county administrator officer, officer, excuse me, to file a financial assistance application for the financial agreement with the state water resources control board for their design and construction of Buena Vista landfill, W M U dash one, final cover reconstruction and class two surface empowerment, expansion liner replacement.
That was not easy either.
Yeah.
Uh, good, good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Uh, we have, uh, the fir-, the first, the first resolution here, we're redoing because the original resolution had a, uh, two and a half million dollar, um, cost item on the bottom of it and we needed to remove that, uh, so that we, it didn't lock us in to the specific amount. Um, so that's the reason for redoing the first one. And that's, it's the exact same authorization, only I removed the one line that said, with a limit of two and a half million dollars on it. So, it authorizes us to go into, they told me just don't put anything on there for this one.
Okay.
Uh, so that's, that's what I did, I just took it off, that was their recommendation. Nothing else changed, we're just redoing the original one, I just took that single line item out of there.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, anybody from the public? Anybody from Zoom?
I make a motion through the resolution.
Okay.
What, I have a question.
Oh, wait a second, got a question.
What's between this agenda item and the next agenda item?
The, the next agenda item sets the total amount that we're going to be able to get funding from the state for. So, in the next agenda item, I have set a, I, I've given you the backup documentation for our most current estimate there, um, but I'm setting the amount that we're able to fund the project at, at up to four million dollars. Uh, so in the event that we were to go over, whatever we put in this next resolution is the defining amount that the state's going to fund us.
So, why do they, they want us to take the amount off this one, but then put a finite amount on the next one?
It was, it was, they're two different resolutions. The first resolution was really a resolution to authorize us to, to apply for the application for the funding. And in that resolution, I put a two and a half million dollar limit on that. So, they said, I, and I brought that up to them, they said, you need to, you need to remu-, you need to redo the resolution and remove it. The second resolution is, is a resolution authorizing the amount of funding that we want. And, and, and in this case, they said, put in a number that's going to cover the cost of your, of your construction of the whole project, because whatever number you put in there, we're not going to give you a penny more than you, what you have.
Just seems like.
Also, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my motion. It, uh, it needs to give approval to C O to do whatever, um, financial documents are necessary with the state water board amendments and finance agreements. That's part of it.
Okay. All for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, he did.
I did. I did, excuse me.
Okay.
Jennifer said so, so I did.
Okay.
And that's it. So, five zero.
So, it was, one, one more thing about that, it was my fault that I put the, the amount in there on that original one. I wasn't called for in the resolution, I just did that on my own, so that's why they.
I'm sure it wasn't Chuck's fault.
So, five G, um, this resolution is just for the four million?
This, this is the resolution that is, that theoretically sets the authorizing amount that we're going to get in our financing agreement.
Okay.
Um, the current estimate is three million, six hundred and eleven, thirty-four thousand dollars. Um, we used the escalator. Technically, I have a, I, I have a, an interim, uh, budgeted amount that I sent into the state previous to this. It's a little bit more than that, it's three hundred and six, three million, six hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty, uh, dollars. And, um, uh, when I had the engineer go back and calculate an actual CPI adjustment to our original amounts based on the time span and everything, this is the amount that it came up to. Uh, so while everyone's talking about, uh, uh, inflation amounts of ten to fifteen percent a year are actually inflation amount for the engineering register on the contract, I think was, uh, year over year, six point eight one percent. So, over that eighteen-month period, it was about eight to nine percent total. So, uh, I added a little bit more onto that just in case. And then the authorizing agreement, I pushed it up to four million, just so we're covered. I don't anticipate that we're going to go over the budget. Uh, hopefully it's going to be less than that i- in the, in the long run. And we do have funding, enough, plenty of funding. Uh, we have about two hundred and ninety thousand a year coming in in funding right now. Uh, the anticipated budget for debt service on the three million, six hundred and eleven thousand is, um, about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and sixty-two thousand a year.
Okay, but if we go over budget, we're entitled to go back and ask for more, up to four million?
We can, yeah, we, we, they'll, they'll give us up to four million, so I don't.
If we go over budget?
Well, the anti-, uh, three hun-, three sixes is, is an inflated number, so I'm anticipating we're going to go over that.
Yeah, we didn't anticipate going over for the jail either, but we only asked for, what, seventeen and a half? And we could have asked for twenty.
Right. Well, I could ask for as much as we want, but I'm anticipating that four should be.
Well, if we don't spend it, we just give it back to them anyway, right?
We, uh, we, it's, it's all reimbursement, so, um, we won't do it anyway.
I, is it reimbursements or?
Well, we have to get the work done and then as soon as we get the billing, we can send it in and we do the bodeo dough and when we get the check, we pay the contractor, usually that's within a thirty-day period.
So, do we have the working capital on this one?
Yes, we do.
I think you should use a dull pencil and add on to some of these numbers because the price of products has been going up so fast.
I, I added an additional ten percent to everything.
That may not be enough.
Probably prudent.
But plus we got four hundred thousand dollars leeways on top of that.
We can go to four and a half million.
Yeah, mhm.
Plus, plus we added, plus we added ten, we added, we added the, the actual adjustment
by using the CP, the engineer scale, so.
We can put four point five on there, four and a half million, just.
That's up to you. I didn't want to alarm anybody, you know?
I, I would, I think it, it wouldn't hurt. I think that's what Supervisor Forster's saying, it, it, it doesn't hurt, we're only going to draw what we need.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, redo your numbers and add some more in just to get us as much cushion as possible.
We all see the construction management's like, wow, four hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Uh, you heard the, the previous agenda item.
That's some design.
Item was supposed to cost four hundred thousand, is going to go over and?
thousand, it's gonna go over a million now.
Right.
Crazy.
But you got me managing this.
Okay. Do we have anything for the public or Zoom? Okay, back to the board.
I would, um, move, ask of our Waste Management Director, um, work with our CIO to, uh, massage these numbers a little bit and then approve the resolution, authorize the incursion of certain capital expenses.
Let's just move that number to four point five and, uh-
Yeah, that'd work.
And, and approve it.
Up to four point five million.
Up to four point five.
By the state revolving loan financing agreement.
Second?
First and seconded, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Five H, discussion of possible action relative to the board of supervisors' meeting schedule for calendar year twenty twenty-four.
Uh, Supervisors, this is a, a little bit earlier. I usually do this, but, um, a couple of things have come up. I just wanted to, to bring it to the board's, um, uh, attention for your approval relative to the, the schedule for next year. What we've got there as far as draft, uh, shows that the twelve holidays, we've got the, the regular board meetings. It does show one meeting in December. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, the blued areas are the, the various RCR, CER, CSAC.
One in December and one in February, right?
And, well, so the other thing that, uh, that really, uh, came up was the need to use this room for elections in, both in February and in October. Uh, the October one will not affect a board of supervisors' meeting, but the February one, on February twenty-seventh, uh, it would. So we would need to anticipate having that meeting either upstairs in C or canceling it. Uh, we could do the C meeting like we did before and just keep it low key, not schedule anything that we anticipate would be, uh, controversial and bring in, uh, uh, folks and just, just do the recurring county's business. Uh-
Well, um, if we really needed a meeting, I guess the, uh, Friday the first, I don't know if we can use the board chambers, but March first?
Uh, no, that should be, that should be colored in too.
That should be pink or-
Yeah, sorry, peach, I guess.
So we could do, we could do a meeting at that time in conference room C if needed.
We can, yeah.
We could do it then if, we can wait and see. Or, or I guess we could do it on this myself.
I was, I, I was anticipating we'd still just hold a regular meeting, uh, in C for routine business. Uh, nothing.
We, right. We have so many board of equalization meetings, why don't we just take the sixth and the twentieth in February and have one board of equalization meeting scheduled?
We can do that. There is, yeah.
Unless you feel it's a short month anyway, but-
No, actually that, that works well. That's a good idea. They cut the sixth, it's still two weeks from the twenty-third.
I see how it is. Richard puts it across here and you like it. When I give it to you, you don't like it. I see how it is.
That's a minority.
How it's-
We could, we could do that. Put, uh, put the two meetings in February on the sixth and the twentieth.
I have one more thing I'd like to add. It's the, um, about two things. The NACO legislative conference is February tenth through the thirteenth. That would work well then, cause it would open up that spot if I, if I go or anybody else. The other one is the NACO conference is July twelfth through the fifteenth.
That wouldn't affect a board meeting either.
Right.
Okay, so I will reschedule the board supervisors' meetings for the, for February sixth and then twentieth. And, uh, as per Chairman Brown's suggestion.
Are you okay with that Supervisor Anetto, since you're gonna be chair next year?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Might be chair next year.
Might be chair.
Never know in life.
Never know. He's gonna pull a nescamia. Okay.
We need to approve that or is this just direction? Is that direction or is that approval?
Direction's fine.
Direction given.
And you're okay with the one meeting in December?
Yes.
And again, we could always, we could always push in the third if we need to. Okay. And now the, uh, five I, Rural County Representative of California, discussion of possible action relative to designation of the twenty twenty-four delegates, alternates.
Is, um, Supervisor Axie alternate on RCR?
No, I am. Jeff is.
I am. Yeah. So he, he's listed on here.
Yeah, I know. I saw that. It was after, too late after.
It was a typo.
Oh, your, your name should go on there.
Yes.
Okay. And Supervisor Anetto wants to stay as a delegate?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they, they'd, they'd axed you, Jeff.
Yes, they did. But I'm, I re-unaxed myself.
You know the routine, as long as you go to the meetings. Right?
Yep.
He was there, cause I was there. Um, anybody have any changes to this? Everybody disagreements?
Has Jeff Gardner been going to the ESJPA meetings?
Yes.
That could.
So, um-
Red, if you wanna make it, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna make the motion to, um, have our RCRC representatives as Supervisor Anetto and Brown as the alternate. And for the, um, ESJPA, Supervisor Anetto, Jeff Gardner and Supervisor Brown as the alternate.
Second. Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And the last item is review and possible approval of the October tenth, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Show move.
Okay.
With, uh, minor corrections.
With minor corrections.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, November seventh at nine AM. Closed session begins at eight thirty.
Well, we have to go back into closed session.
Oh, we are going back into closed session.
Yep.
Excuse me. We're going back into closed session.
Before the horse there, Jeff.